Good evening, I'm going to call this meeting of the Gloucester School Committee to order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful engaged lifelong learners and this meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 10 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. If you are calling in on the phone, you can press star nine to request speak. If you're watching on a computer or a device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. And we'll have a roll call for attendance. Maria?
Mayor taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Here.
Ms. Weason.
Here.
Kathy Clancy.
She's gonna be a little late.
Okay. Mr. Favazza.
Present.
Chairman Pope.
Here.
And Ms. Prince.
Here.
Okay. Okay, I will now ask you to join me in the salute to the flag and after the salute to the flag, I will, we will have a moment of silence for Tammy Moore's, our nurse at East Gloucester School for many, many years and who passed away last week. And so, let's see, I just gotta... Maria, I gotta be able to share my screen here.
Yep, you should be able to do that. You're a co-host.
Okay. There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, first order of business is oral communications. If there's anybody here that would like to address the school committee on any subject, I'll just start from the beginning. Oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every regular school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the proper subcommittee. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the committee with the permission of the chair. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of the prepared communication to the recording secretary. The school committee chair shall not allow complaints as to the individual performance or character. And... Okay, Cynthia Carney. Hi Cynthia.
Hello, thank you so much. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. So nice to see you all. Happy New Year. On behalf of the Teachers Association, Gloucester Teachers Association, I'd like to address the topic of teacher COVID-19 vaccinations. We've not heard about any plans for the rollout for teacher vaccinations. We did join with the district to co-sign a letter to DASI through the Superintendent's Association requesting that teachers be moved to Phase One of vaccinations. So I'm assuming that the district is agreement with that. However, currently, teachers are allocated in Phase Two of the rollout, which is due to begin in February, which is right around the corner. As you know, the end of Phase Two brings us to virtually the end of the school year with only about one and a half months left of teaching. Because in Gloucester, most teachers are working fully in person, we would like assurances that teachers will be given priority to be at the beginning of the Phase Two timeline. Teachers have stepped up to the task of in-person learning and with recent evidence of transmission within the schools, we feel that they deserve the protection that warrants being in a room with sometimes 20-plus humans for hours at a time, in some cases at three feet of distancing or less. Other districts are making teachers a priority. For example, Malden, who is primarily a remote district except for their sub-separate, has moved teachers to the very beginning of Phase Two to prepare for in-person learning, has already vaccinated some of their substantially separate staff and is preparing to roll out teacher vaccinations by February 4th, as soon as they receive the doses. It's been a priority for Gloucester to provide in-person education and members of the school committee have bestowed accolades to the district for its decision. Therefore, we hope that the Gloucester School Committee advocates for teachers, the people who have put themselves on the front lines in education and enabled Gloucester to realize its goal of in-person learning, to be at the top of the list for vaccinations. The GTA would be happy to stand with you in bringing this to the city council and to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you Cynthia.
Jonathan, just for the public, Karen Carroll's here tonight with us and she will, in a little bit, give us an update on a number of things, including vaccination across the city. And so, we will be discussing that tonight.
Okay, great. We have Olympia Palazola. Olympia.
Yes, I have three comments to make and a request. At one of the last, the last meeting that was held with Doran Whittier, there was a man that got on the screen and I didn't get his name. And it was when I talked about how deep the driveway down into the school was and he insisted it was only five feet and he said he was going to put a drawing out so that I would be able to see it. So if there was some way that you can get ahold of this person and maybe get a copy of that, either put on your website or at least let me know that it's up there, I would like to see that. That's the first thing. The second thing I'd like...
We'll try to do that.
Need any information?
Well, we'll try and put that up on the website.
I appreciate that. The second thing that I'd like to make a comment on is that a friend who is a grandmother of a student at West Parish School was just telling me about her, she picks up her grandson from Lane, Laneville and picks him up at, at West Parish. And she leaves an hour ahead so that she's right inside the front line of probably the second or third person in line. But she mentioned that when she's there, the principal comes out and tells the people in the cars that they have to pull up like two inches next to the next car. And we, we know they're trying to get all those people through as fast as they can. And she, she insisted, she said, "I'm, I can't do that. I'm not comfortable doing two inches, so I'm about six inches away." But in the meantime, they do hold up a sign for their child with their child's name on it. But if the child comes out to their car first and the car in front of them is still there, they can't get out of there anyway. They're stuck until that first car gets their child. So just, just to let you know, I mean, that's right at the door. So just something that I just heard the other day and I thought it would be interesting. You probably already know this, but that's my second comment. And the third comment that I have is basically, it's about the traffic commission meeting that I listened to the other night. And it really was upsetting because the biggest thing that I came out of it was the trailer trucks that haven't been really mentioned. I understand that Barry Pratt brought that up at a, at a city council meeting at one point, but nothing in your traffic report really discusses traffic, the trailer trucks. And they, they actually turn onto Eastern Avenue right by the school as they're coming down the highway. So that's a big problem. Also, there is, there are businesses up beyond where the school is supposed to go and they have trailer trucks that go up and down the street as well. And that's a real dangerous problem. If Patty Emerald's on, she may speak about that because she, she encountered a trailer truck coming down the street that could not make the turn. So, you know, she may be addressing that. But again, apparently, the traffic study that you have mentions the possibility of adding a third lane on, going downhill on Webster Street so that the trailer trucks can make the turn to go, take a left-hand turn. I just can't imagine how you can squeeze a third lane in there. So anyway, that's most of my comments. One more, my sister-in-law at 25 Webster Street requested a handicap parking space in front of her house and was granted one because the parents parked in front of her house and then they walked down to go get their child. Even though she has that sign there, the parents still park in front of 25 Webster Street, which is the next house up. And they, they park in front of her house and she can't even park there. So there's some major problems that really need to be discussed with our own traffic commission and I hope you're going to have them in front of you so that you can have a good discussion with them. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Cynthia. I don't, there's a no last name here attached to this.
Hi, sorry, I, I didn't realize my last name didn't come up on the screen. Cynthia Mahousky over at 13 Wall Street, but also a teacher at Gloucester High School. And just wanted to thank both Laura and Samantha for their statement about, was it the last one where, after the insurrection at the Capitol, just the statement that the two of you had put out, how much I appreciated that and how good it was for the public and for any students to know that we have members of our school committee who are making statements. They're not political, they're what we're trying to help our students with. And with that said, I was, and while I was glad that the residents of the school committee didn't, I mean, obviously, you must have all agreed that that was okay to, to put out to the public. It was disappointing to see it was only two members and not a unified message among all the members. And I think that says something to the public when we only have two out of the rest of you not saying anything. And I just would have appreciated more of a unified statement. I mean, I know by default, you're supporting because the two were allowed to speak, but, but anyhow, I just wanted to say how much I appreciated it. It really helps, it really helps reinforce when I'm doing things in my classroom and messages that I'm giving to the students. And the two students that we have down here tonight, you guys look fabulous on TV. Look at that smile Mia, it's awesome. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. If there's no other people that would like to speak to the school committee, seeing none, we're going to close oral communications and we will move on to our recognitions. We have here tonight our two police officers and ACE from the community police, dog police, I'm gonna mess it up here, Community Policing Act. And, and they're here to introduce ACE, which is the new star of the community. So Officer Castro and Sutera, would you like to introduce ACE?
I'll start the, and then Pete can talk, I'll talk more about the administrative stuff and then Pete can talk to about the day-to-day activities of ACE. So my name's Lieutenant Castro. I started the Cops and Kids program along with John McCarthy back in 2016. And the program has grown and grown throughout the years. And since we started the Community Impact Unit at the Police Department, it's really taken off. And the Cops and Kids program, our focus is building positive relationships with our children in a positive environment. Usually, when kids usually come across a police officer, it's usually during a crisis. So we wanted to change that topic and have the children meet us and know us before that they meet us during a police accident, a car accident, or a domestic assault or something like that. So, you know, over the years, we've built a tremendous bond with all of our students. They all know us by name. We hand out baseball cards. We have various programs within Cops and Kids. But one aspect we were lacking was helping children with mental illnesses like ADHD, autism, you know, ADD and de-escalation techniques and how to deal with children who don't want to go to school and behavior problems. So Officer Sutera started looking into getting a comfort dog in mid-October. And within six weeks, we were able to find ACE, who comes from a breeder down a mall pole, who trains these dogs as a community resource dog slash therapy dog. He can be padded, padded like, unlike therapy dogs. So he welcomes the love. We partnered with the Doug Flutie Foundation, who upfronted the cost of the dog, which is $16,000. And although that sounds like a lot of money, he's been trained for a year. That's the price of the dog as well. So, you know, the breed of the dog itself is probably $5,000 and he's gone to training for a full year already. The Gloucester Education Foundation is also partnered with us to help us pay for ACE. We've partnered with all the PTOs in the elementary schools to do some fundraising. And we also have an adoptive dog program, which allows businesses to adopt ACE for a donation to the Gloucester Fund, which is helping us repay the Gloucester, the Doug Flutie Foundation. You can probably noticed on Cops and Kids, we have a stuffed animal, this guy right here, and an ACE book that was authored by our school resource offices. And those are also being given to families for a donation. And that donation is, we asked for $40 to be able to replenish stock. And the reason behind the stuffed animal is when Officer Sutera goes and meets a kid that's in crisis or has faced trauma, upon departure of his visit, he'll provide the stuffed animal in the book to the child as a continued sense of comfort. The Gloucester Education Foundation provided enough funds for us to provide every elementary school with one book and one ACE stuffed animal that the teachers can use as an interactive tool with all their students. So it's really a tremendous program. It sounds like a lot of money, $16,000, but I'm going to tell you, the rewards have already been paid off, paid off 10 times over. I've seen it firsthand. It's, I'm super proud of Officer Sutera and ACE. And the program's just going to get better and better. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Pete, Officer Sutera, he can explain what he does with ACE during the day and we can answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Peter.
Hey guys, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So my name is Officer Sutera. It's good to see you guys. This is ACE. He's not really wanting to look at the camera right now. He looks at them all day. But, no, he's, first of all, sorry for your loss with, with Tammy guys. She was a great person. I knew her personally as well. We're all going to miss her. So back to ACE. He lives with me, as you can see. Every day, we're based out of O'Malley. Principal Beatty has welcomed us with open arms and, and has a new buddy that she gets to see every morning. So we start there and that's basically our home base. I mean, O'Malley is busy enough, so even if we didn't get any calls elsewhere, ACE gets plenty of work at O'Malley from letting kids earn time to train him through guidance or just me showing up in classes, which we're, we're working on getting to everybody. I've been getting some emails lately saying, we haven't made it to them yet. So we're working on that. But I'm also in touch with the elementary teachers and currently at the high school too. So we're trying to get there. We have all the schools to get to. So anybody who is interested in watching and/or is a teacher, send me an email and, and we'll get ACE there and we'll, we'll go over what ACE does. Kind of the background on ACE. I worked at Special Education School before I was a police officer 11 years ago. And I saw the dog groups work flawlessly. Kids looked forward to it. I know I sound like a broken record for those of you who have heard me say this before, but it's, I've seen it with my own eyes. So when I pitched it to Lieutenant Castro, to the chief, to the mayor, I, I pretty much guaranteed it would work, hoping that I wasn't wrong. Sorry if you guys can hear screaming in the background. Gloucester must have scored a goal. So yeah, I've seen it, I've seen it work. I, three years ago is when I started looking into this and really just in October is when we got to put it into action. We had everything funded somehow. Lieutenant Castro and myself did a lot of, spent a lot of time making phone calls. We, we got all ACE's food taken care of, his vet. Doug Flutie Foundation, Doug Flutie Junior Foundation for Autism stepped up with that grant. ACE and I go to Golden Opportunities for Independence. Supposed to be weekly, but with COVID, we go every two weeks and it's ACE, myself and a trainer, and they show me what ACE is supposed to do. So ACE is supposed to be, at the end of his training, he is going to be service dog trained. So we have to do like the AKC Good Citizen stuff, which is basically training him to be in public and, and greeting strangers and stuff like that. But then he's also going to have to do his service dog skills. So that's the final outcome is to have him be service dog certified. So he will stay with me. He'll, he'll lay down when I'm talking to somebody. He just needs to, but the difference is people can touch him. So it's a little confusing and I do like people asking, can I pat him? Which is great because ACE is supposed to sit and wait for them to approach him and, and let a friendly stranger approach him. So it's good that they ask, but we're still in training. I know I'm rambling, but I'm trying to squeeze everything in.
No, that's, that's fine. It's, this is great. This is a great program. Are there any questions? Melissa?
Muted.
You're muted.
Yeah, thank you. I have two questions and I may know the answers already, but I'm going to ask them anyway. To Jeremiah, who I get to work with, so I get to see ACE and hear about ACE a lot. But can you talk a little bit about why you got the stuffed animal ACE and talk about how that helps during de-escalation? Because I just think that was a great story when you told me and I just think it's worth sharing to those who, who are following ACE, which is more than half the city, of course.
Yeah, so each elementary school will be provided with an ACE dog in a book for the teacher to use it as an interactive tool as a gift for kids who are behaving, who are doing a good job, however they want. Let the kids take the stuffed animal home as a prize, whatever. But Officer Sutera is also often called to a kid who is in crisis. And I don't know if you guys saw what we did before Christmas, but we got dressed up as Buddy the Elf. Officer Schola was Santa Claus and we went to every single elementary class in two days and we visited kids just to wish them a Merry Christmas because Cops and Kids aren't in the schools like we used to. And several times, we went to some classrooms and the teachers would say, you know, so-and-so's having a hard day. And I wish I could share the stories, but it's confidential information. And that child would step out of the classroom and within seconds of seeing ACE, the whole child's demeanor would change. It's, it's almost magical. So when Officer Sutera gets called to a school with his child in crisis, he will bring that child a stuffed animal in a book. The book is interactive. It's really written about ACE. It's from ACE. It's about ACE's day-to-day life, what, where he comes from, what he does all day. And the stuffed animals are super soft. They have a T-shirt on them. And when Officer Sutera leaves that child who is in crisis with ACE, so there's no sense of abandonment. We're going to leave that child with a stuffed animal in a book for a continued source of comfort for that child after, after Officer Sutera leaves.
Thank you. And then my second question to Officer Sutera, just because I wanted to ask him each a question. Is there, and I don't know the answer to this. I think there's, I read something or I watched you on a talk show recently, talking about a student rewards program where kids can earn the ability to walk the dog down the hallway or something like that? Is that something that's going on?
Yeah, so that's actually, the Guidance Council is so great and the principal and assistant principals at O'Malley have been so receptive to this that we've pretty much, without even talking about it, have developed just a, an instant reward system for kids. And I just want to get back to the de-escalation thing. ACE isn't running in and breaking up fights on the, on the playground. So I like to consider it like a preventative, a de-escalation preventative more than anything, just because kids that we know may be heading towards those situations, we can offer that to be earned. Kids that may not want to stay in class, if they do stay in class, they can come out and train ACE with myself and one of the Guidance Counselors or even just myself. So kind of through guidance, that's ACE's home base is, is through guidance. Kids will, kids who I have a relationship with, obviously, if they need a break from class, will come see me. But the reward system is really through guidance. So kids that need guidance weekly have kind of developed that reward system. So if they have a good week on Fridays, I hand them the leash and I just walk behind them and see if they remember what I taught them the week before. So basically, ACE is getting trained, which is benefiting ACE and the kids are earning that time with ACE, which is, has, it's been awesome. And we've only been doing it for a little while. I've only had them for two months and it's already paying dividends. I can, I, I see it. I don't know. I'm hoping the school sees it as well, but I'm pretty sure they do.
Thank you both.
I just want, one more thing. When we presented this to the mayor and the chief, I mean, they were instant yeses right off the bat. Matter of fact, the mayor's already bugging me about a second dog. But, you know, this is all being done without one cent from taxpayers and it's all donation driven. And it, that's why we call it a community resource dog, because he is benefiting the community in whole. When COVID relaxes, he'll be in nursing homes with, you know, visiting people in Alzheimer's. He'll be in senior citizen living quarters. He'll be at the Rosebaker Senior Center. So he's truly a community resource dog. So we're very lucky and we're thankful for the support the mayor and the chief gave us to get him.
Well, we're grateful for the hard work you've done and, and we're grateful to have ACE as part of the team. Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much. And Samantha?
I just wanted to say that I love everything about this. So thank you so much for doing so much work to, to introduce this to our community. And I, I want to hear more stories about how it's working with the kids. So bring them on.
Thank you. And actually, real quick, it worked the first day we had him. So just to, just to reinforce that, literally, the first day, I was going to bring him to O'Malley to just show him around and get him used to the building. We ended up bringing a student who was in crisis back into the building, who was pretty much leaving. So...
I think the mayor, the first day... The mayor got a phone call on that very first day about how he helped somebody in crisis within hours of getting him. So the stories will continue, the positive stories. And Cops and Kids will grow. We're looking at trademark Cops and Kids. If anybody knows a lawyer that can help us out.
Okay.
Thanks Joel.
All right. Anything else? Do we have any other recognitions that we would like to bring forward? Ben?
Mr. Pope, so I'd like to also recognize O'Malley. This is for the work that they're doing there that was highlighted on NBC 10 News this evening. That is the work to build desks for students. This work, what the original idea came from Pat Hand and then Dan Graham and Dave Brown have been instrumental in designing and then getting the support from the Gloucester Education Foundation to build, at this point, 30 desks for students who need them at home during their, for their studies, especially during remote learning. And, and a bunch of staff, 15 staff members have helped build those. I don't have the link to the, to the news report yet, but on that report, you'll see some great pictures, including the fantastic design of these desks. These are very good-looking desks. But I want to just call out that team, the O'Malley team, also Lynn Beatty, Beatty for her support of this effort. And they're now looking to build some more for folks in elementary school as well. So just been a great help and a great idea and a great initiative and leadership from some of O'Malley's, O'Malley team. And really appreciate how their support in our students and their families.
Any other recognitions? Any other recognitions? Thank you. Melissa?
I just, I think this is something we should do every every time we meet, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna say it tonight. I just wanna recognize all the staff of the Gloucester Public Schools. For making us a success and keeping our kids in school, you know, without our teachers, without our nurses, without our bus drivers, without food service. Everyone is making this work and I just think every chance we get to recognize them, we should. So. Big thank you to everyone in the Gloucester Public Schools. And the police department.
Yep. So thank you very much. And um. If there's no other recognitions, we'll move on to our next item, which is our Student Advisory Council. We have Mia and still and um Megan here. So. I don't know who's gonna take the lead, but it's your show.
All right. Hi, everybody. Um I'm just gonna start off with secret pals, which is a tradition for student council and NHS students over at GHS. And basically a student will get assigned a teacher or two or three. And you get a gift throughout the week and it's like a secret, AKA secret pals. And at the end of the week, you bring them their last present and you say, I'm your secret pal. And I think it's a great way to show our appreciation for our teachers, because this year has been really, really tough for everyone. But we're all looking forward to that and for sports. COVID has made a very little impact on our winter sports. We've been able to play most most of our games as scheduled. But a few have been rescheduled because of their opponent statuses. So we're doing really good with that. And our student athletes, coaches and our limited family have been doing fantastic jobs at following the protocol. With the QR codes, masks, such like that. Our sports records, we have boys hoops with three and three, girls hoops with oh and five, girls hockey with oh, five and one. Boys hockey with four and oh, swim and dive with two and oh. And the gymnastics meets are scheduled to start this weekend. And now I'm gonna hand it off to Megan to finish it up.
Hi, everyone. So um at the high school, I've talked about this a little bit in the past. At the our health center that we have Karen and Linda, who work there, do um the free food locker, which uh provides students who may need. Breakfast, lunch or dinner um to go in and basically shop like a little grocery store. You order online and then they'll prepare the bag of anything that you asked for. Uh and then you can either pick it up right at the school, right as you're leaving the building, or they'll actually deliver it to your house. This week, this past week alone, they made forty home deliveries, which. Which is amazing, because in the beginning we've had like, we did like two deliveries. It's been a big, big uh success. There's been help from the ROTC, NHS and the Youth Advisory Council. And they have some great um menu options. They got cereal, they have oats, pasta, peanut butter. Tuna, you know, they're just hitting every food group and it's, they're making it so um. What's the word? They're making it so friendly, like they don't want anyone to feel discouraged and they're doing a great job of keeping it anonymous. And you know, all the students who help out have been very good about it. From guidance, they have been in contact with the Biotech Academy and they are um starting up applications. For Biotech Academy, for anyone who doesn't wanna go to college or wants to do the biotech as an alternative. And then finally, I know we talked about some recognitions earlier. I just wanted to personally give some recognitions from. The high school students towards um our principal, Mr. Cook and our two um. Well, I can't, I can't think of it. I'm so sorry. Uh to Mr. Cook and to uh Mr. Cobb and Mr. Gallinelli. I know it's definitely a very hard time right now. With COVID and some of the students can definitely give a little run for their money, but they've been doing just such a great job of keeping it. Uh the high school so bright and happy and even though we have to follow the one ways and wear masks and everything, they just make it so. Welcoming and so loving and the high school this year, even with all this going on, has been one of the best years, I think.
Thank you. Any uh any questions to the students, Megan and Mia? Well, have a good evening and we'll uh as always, you're welcome to stay. But uh we understand it if you uh have other more important things to be doing.
Thank you.
Bye. Um and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody would like? Remove for a further review or discussion? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Mayor taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favaza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
And Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Um and we'll move on to deliberations on educational issues and I will turn it over to Superintendent Lummis. Who will um give his update and report.
Great. Good evening, everybody. Uh so we're gonna start off uh in terms of my update tonight. We will start with a um update from Karen Carroll about COVID in the city and she'll talk about a number of things, uh including vaccinations. And then I'll give an update on uh COVID in the schools. Discuss a little bit about giving an update on the pool testing program. We're hoping to uh uh take on with Desi's support. We have an attendance report followed from last meeting. Folks wanted to see uh see get a little more information about how we're addressing some attendance challenges we have. And then we'll come finish with a uh an update about this year's um budget and finances. So. I will hand it over to Karen Carroll and she will help us understand just where the city stands uh at this time with uh with COVID. Good evening, Karen. Karen, wel- welcome. Good to see you.
Ben, good to see you too. And school committee members, good to see you all. Yeah, we have definitely seen a little stabilizing trend in the last week or so, even uh some downward trends, which is. Really positive and we hope it continues. As we like to say, we're cautiously optimistic that, you know, this is. We've been through the peak after Christmas, um but typically our flu season and the peak of some of the other uh winter infectious. Diseases is February. So, you know, we we're not sure where this will go. And the other thing we're watching closely is these new strains that seem to be a little bit stronger. Than the original COVID nineteen strains. So, you know, these are all variables at play that we we don't know, but. We seem to be sitting in a a pattern in the last week or so of the pressure coming down on our system, on our healthcare, our ICU beds. Our test turnaround time is still staying at about uh two days. Our positivity rate in the state is around four point seven percent. Gloucesters was a little higher um last week, so was the states when they came out on Thursday. So we'll see how they look. Uh but that was today's rate and in general, it's been coming down. We have a hundred and thirteen active cases as of today, four in the hospital and thirty-four deaths to date. Um our wastewater virus levels continue to decline significantly in the last two weeks, um a big drop there. So that's also a good sign. Um. The, in terms of our vaccination efforts, uh we did have our first vaccine clinic for first responders, five hundred regional first responders. Couple of weeks ago and we'll do the second dose um in early February when they're due. We have a small clinic, another small clinic this week of three hundred doses that we're running for phase one. Folks, um and then we will start with phase two when we can. Hopefully our plan is to start next week. Um unfortunately, we only will be receiving a hundred doses a week for a while, which is is very, very little vaccine. So um that's due to a nationwide shortage with the vaccine production pipeline. Um and we hope that that will change soon, but we don't anticipate, you know, it will change for a few weeks anyway. So, you know, in terms of phase two, we uh the first part of phase two will be people seventy-five and older. Um and then it will go to sixty-five and older and people with two or more comorbidities. Um and then finally, that third category down will be early ed, um K to twelve workers and several other essential worker categories. So I know there was a call and question before about where do teachers sit? And um I know that there has been an ask of the governor's office to reconsider and move teachers up. Further up in order of priority in phase two or even into phase one. And I have not heard anything on that, uh whether that will be happening, but they do, the state does. Um frequently update the priority list um and give us further clarification. So at this point, we have only been able to vaccinate school nurses who provide vaccine. COVID, uh sorry, testing, who provide COVID testing. And um that was early in phase one and um. A little bit later this week in phase um one, we'll be offering any other school nurses who are not doing. COVID testing, but who any school nurses uh fall into front facing healthcare workers. Um and so that is the update as far as, you know, that's kind of all we know. It's been extremely difficult, especially moving into phase two with such limited supply. And we have a lot of concerns about seniors and their ability to access vaccine. There are online registrations. You need to make your appointments online. And we have a lot of seniors, a lot of folks in the community who don't have access to a computer or can't. Find their way around a very frustrating system with very few vaccines. So um we anticipate it will be a rough month or six weeks until. That vaccine really starts moving our way.
Melissa has a question?
Thank you. Thank you, Karen, always for coming to our meetings and being very helpful. So I don't know if you were on earlier. I think you heard a little bit um when GTA President Cynthia Carney um had requested. Or asked that they be moved up in the phase two, as you just said, I think they're stated like third on the list with essential workers. Um and she also made the comment that um another community made their teachers priority. Do communities have that flexibility to do that or? Is something else going on? Because I mean, I haven't heard any talk of that and I'm just curious to know. I mean, is there a way to move them up? Or not based on governor regulations?
Yeah, I mean, DPH is extremely strict with the criteria and if we veer from the criteria, we are, we will jeopardize future vaccine doses. Which we do not want to do, obviously. Um so yeah, I mean, that's the way to have the discussion is to push it forward to the governor. And as I said, they are constantly reviewing and revising the categories and the priorities. But we will have to work first with the seventy-five plus, then the sixty-five, then those other worker categories. Um and we certainly hope that we will get to the schools and and the school community um as lo- as well as all those other. Categories, you know, and and there are so many ways in which the vaccine moves into the community. So I won't say. That it's not possible that another community found a way to give vaccine to teachers. You know, there are programs that come through from the feds um in in terms of senior housing. We we have an example in Gloucester where one building was selected through a federal HUD program to receive the vaccine last week. Um and they are technically in phase two. So there are some anomalies like that that do happen. I'm not aware of any that involve teachers or educator educators, um early ed or any of the other essential workers that are prioritized at that same level. But if I do, I certainly will let, make sure Ben knows about it and the team and. We offer it up, but the criteria are pretty well set by the state and they largely reflect reflect the CDC's priority groups. Each state is chosen to do it differently, but the Department of Public Health gives us the guidelines and um you know, we have to follow them.
And when you said we're only getting a hundred doses every every week or once a month, a week it was. Gloucester residents aren't limited to staying in Gloucester to go get it, correct? I mean, if they wanted to go to Gillette Stadium and and have access to it, that's something they could do. As opposed to waiting for Gloucester to get doses?
Yeah, absolutely. Um and today, and the Danvers Mass Vaccination Site opened up at the Doubletree in Danvers. So um that's great. I understand some people were able to make some appointments this morning. I'm not sure how it's gone. Um the other thing that we do know unfortunately is there's more appointments than there are vaccine. So it just because you got an appointment doesn't necessarily mean there'll be the supply there in two weeks to give you your vaccine. So it's it's tough right now and but yes, people can go to any of the mass vaccination sites and that is the. The best thing to do is to continually watch mass.gov, where can I get my vaccine? There's an interactive map and there's a spreadsheet you can download with the phone numbers. The type of vaccine they have, how you make the appointment. There are some that you call, there are some that you um have to book through their Walgreens. You know, you have to sort of register as a Walgreen customer. So there's all kinds of ways in which you can access it. And the state does, it does a great job of keeping that website really up to date. Um and it will say, you know, who who the clinic is open to at this point um and when the next group will be allowed if they know.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Laura, you have a question?
Yes, well, uh Melissa asked my first one, so thank you. You know, obviously we're reading about sort of when they're, you know, the the appointments are full, but people don't show up and there's extra doses. Have you? Have we had that here in Gloucester and do we have inability in that case? You know, to sort of get to people who can get that vaccine on that day?
Yeah, I mean, we're never gonna throw a dose away. Um we can keep the doses for up to ten days. So. There's a number of things we can do. For example, if our clinic tomorrow doesn't have enough people. We can keep that vaccine in our fridge until next week and run a clinic on Monday or Tuesday or add a day to our senior. Housing clinics, because we can actually start that and we plan to start that next week. But typically, I mean, our first clinic, we had five hundred doses and we used all five hundred. For the phase one allowed categories. Now, I won't say it was easy. It was a lot of um, you know, filling and as we had cancellations or. People who were ineligible, we were scrambling. We had our own sort of system of wait lists. Should we ever have, you know, mass vaccination sites, the ability that will get harder. But we were able to fill all five hundred spots. We did not waste a single dose. The five hundred spots were taken out by a mixture of, you know, school nurses and other people in the community doing. The vaccine COVID, sorry, COVID testing. And then people in the community doing COVID vaccines. So anyone outside of the hospital, so all of the people working our clinics were vaccinated. All of the first responders, school nurses, I said that. Uh and then we moved into home health, congregate care um was up there as well. Coast Guard, a few other harbor masters, some of those folks. And then we went through the congregate care and then we started with home healthcare. So um.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking about going into the next phase, you know, if if that, you know, obviously it's, we would love, we would love for our teachers. To be able to get the vaccine as quickly as possible. So you know that and you, you know. You're working this all brilliantly. So I'm, I have no questions. I just, you know, obviously if there's extra doses, we'd love to get them. In there quickly. My second question um is related to the variants. Do you have a sense of how we here in Gloucester will know? You know, when our, you know, when the, when those numbers start to reflect the change that they. That I hear is coming from some of those variants and how will, you know, how were our current early warning systems work to prepare us?
Um, you know, I really don't know much about how the progression of some of these new strains, you know, how they present. And how the symptoms are different. We haven't seen a lot of it. I think we've seen maybe one case in Massachusetts of one of the new strains. So I don't know how, you know, clinically, I I've not, not really up on the details of what that's gonna look like and how. It will, what we know is that it's a lot more contagious. So, you know, that's gonna be a problem, obviously, if it starts moving through. At this point, you know, it's very hard to say whether it will hit us or not, or whether we'll have some. Being separated up here on the North Shore and Cape Anne. But, you know, we we've seen we kind of were from, you know, eventually it catches up. So cautiously optimistic that these strains won't. Won't hit us. Um we are hearing that all of the vaccines we currently have and the Johnson Johnson will, Johnson. Will work for um the strains, they believe at this point, the strains that we have identified. The vaccines will work for those. Uh but again, I don't, you know, think there's enough research to know any of that for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Samantha?
Thank you, Karen. So I'm just curious, how will vaccinating K through twelve educators work? Will it be sort of at the school level, we'll be doing it through our schools? Or will teachers have to sort of individually log on and sort of, for the lack of a better word, sort of fight for an appointment? Or will it be a little bit more streamlined?
Um, I imagine if we can get vaccine, we would do it like we do flu clinic. So we would, when we're ready to, when we're allowed to, we will bring our vaccinating team into the schools. And we call those closed pods. And we would set up like we do with flu vaccine in the cafeteria or something, and we would offer that to staff. That's typically, you know, how we run our flu vaccine. The covid vaccine is not that different an operation in terms of the logistics with a flu clinic. There's a lot more to do with the actual handing, handling of the vaccine with covid than with flu. But the flow and those kinds of things is pretty similar. So we hope that, that we'll be able to offer that soon. That's our hope. We're, we've got a team together. We are ready. We have support from the mayor's office. We have figured out the finances to break even as close as we can with the reimbursement rate. So we have this all ready to roll and we just need the vaccine. So when we get it, we will do these sort of closed pods for something like the school. I imagine that's how we would do it. Now, that's not to say it might not be at the school. We might choose a site that's central, that's convenient for the flow and has enough room for people to recover and be watched. Not recover, but you have to be watched for fifteen minutes to thirty minutes. So that's different from flu as well. And yeah, I mean, these are the things that we'd love to be able to do and we have the vaccine as soon as we do. But yeah, we, I think that's how we would propose to do it unless of course Desi has plans. And that's the other thing that could happen, that someone else is going to be able to access the vaccine. Desi might set up some kind of program where they partner with a pharmacy and come in or partner with National Guard like they've done in other areas. And supply the vaccine. That's fine too. You know, all of these types of things will start to crop up wherever they can and partnerships will form. And you know, I haven't heard what Desi's plan is. I mean, I haven't heard that they are talking about this. So I can't really answer who's talking about it, but we certainly are. I mean, we're, if no one else moves into that space for you, we, we will be there and do that.
Quickly, I appreciate that. And I think the fewer barriers, the better. You know, just, I know, I've heard just sort of some of the horror stories of trying to log on to some of these sites and how difficult it is. And so it would be great if our educators didn't have to really go through that process. Thank you.
You still have to self-register. There is a system that the state uses now and that's different than the flu. It's not by paper anymore. You pre-register your appointment when we open the clinic. That prompts you to go through all of the requirements, your health insurance information, all of that. So the billing happens automatically and then the, the link to the state's Maven database happens automatically. So that's great. It's much easier in that sense. But staff will have to make their appointment, but it won't be like a fight for limited spots, you know? We'll have a clinic, if there's a hundred people that need it, we'll have a hundred appointments. And we'll try to work around schedules that make sense for the teachers and the other staff in the, in the school community.
If I, Jonathan, if I could add a couple of things related to this.
Go ahead.
So a couple of things, I just want to reiterate a few, few things for our staff and everyone listening is that obviously from a state level, this is very, very fluid. You know, the, the K to twelve educators were at the very, were at one point, I think at the top of the phase two. And just earlier this week, the group that's sixty five plus with, you know, comorbidities, you know, was inserted there. So, so it is fluid and as, as I think, and even this, this, this afternoon, speaking with the commissioner on his, on his conference call. He was pretty clear that, you know, we're all aiming for vaccinating teachers in the month of February still. Okay, it may have been early February before, now it's, you know, probably after February break, but that's still the target he's, he's explaining and he's describing. As, as Karen just said, that is very fluid and can, can change for a number of reasons. But I haven't heard yet where we're talking April by any stretch of imagination. That has not come up and that I don't think that's anyone's intention, certainly not ours. As I mentioned earlier, superintendents from the North Shore rallied together. And I helped in revising a letter advocating for earlier testing for K to twelve staff. That was signed by the union presidents, including Cynthia Carney, which I would very much appreciate it. And that was submitted to the governor as well. So we're working on those fronts and a variety of fronts to try to, to make sure that K twelve, K twelve staff are prioritized as soon as possible. It is, it is a tough thing, honestly, at the same time to, to realize that the folks that are ahead of us are, are elderly, you know, seventy five and older or sixty five and older. And, you know, so that's, that's a tough calculus, honestly. But we do want to push hard for and, and work for our K to twelve staff to make sure that they are vaccinated just as soon as possibly, as soon as possible, as soon as the system will allow it and soon, as soon as we can get, get there. So I think it makes sense for all of us to, to, to work at the state level as opposed to the local level. Karen, she has described, really has to carry this out. She's not necessarily, you know, able to change the rules, but I think we're all in supportive of that. So just want to, all our nurses have been vaccinated at this point. We are looking to whether or not some of our direct service providers who are, you know, closest to the students in terms of providing direct services may come earlier as well. And so we're continuing to work on that. So that's an update from here on that vaccination. We'll keep after it and make sure our staff are well communicated with. It's forward for, for vaccinating them.
Any other, any other questions? Thank you, Karen. And it's always so informative and so important, the, the work that you do. And we are so appreciative that you take the time to, to come and answer our questions and give us an update. So.
So I have asked Karen to stick around for a little bit because I'm going to go into pool testing and she may be able to help us a little bit with that if there are questions. So I will put up a presentation here. So just in terms of, as Karen already said, active cases right now, a hundred and thirteen across the city. I like to keep on having the historical results here. As you can see, as we've described before, increase in October, decrease until the Thanksgiving break and increase after that, which then was dropping pretty quickly up until December break. And then, as we all know, increased rapidly again and is now, has decreased, you can see from two weeks ago. There we are at a hundred and seventy nine. I think the city went a little bit higher than that. And it has been decreasing pretty significantly in the past two weeks to now a hundred and thirteen active cases. In the schools, we've had a hundred and eleven cases total since September sixteenth. A hundred and one of those have resolved. There are ten active right now. And I'll show you just some recent data about that. There've been eleven new cases since a week ago. So we're sort of looking at week by week. At this point, ten, ten total are active. Our close contacts, not much change in that. Many of our cases at this point, most of them, almost all of them in fact, have very few or have no close contacts. That's because families are doing the right thing and helping out. If they're, they have symptoms or if their students have any sort of symptoms, they keep them out. But also even more importantly, because there's a lot of family transmission, if one family member is positive, those, their students or their kids need to quarantine. And thankfully, families are abiding by those quarantines. And that means that if, if a, if a student, if a child gets a, a case is positive because of a family member, they had not been in the schools for a little while because they've been quarantining. So that's good. There have been two cases of in-school transmission, both those are this month. I'll give you an update on that right now. So there was a case, in-school transmission case at Beaman, which I reported to all of you two weeks ago at school committee. We had one more case at the high school, which I've communicated, the high school communicated to its faculty and its families. And I communicated to you, but want to report publicly here. One student became positive from another student's case. They were a close contact to another positive student, student in the school. At that point, that classroom met the threshold for mobile, for Desi mobile testing. And that meant that there were two positive cases in one classroom within fourteen days. And there was evidence of in-school transmission, as I just said. That meant that we were able to and got the mobile testing unit in from the state. They provided PCR tests to all those who were in class with the two students, or I should say, all those staff and students who were in those students and those classes were eligible for testing. Not all chose to be tested. But sixteen people were tested on Monday and there are no positives from that. So that's good news. We also knew prior to that, that no close contacts or other close contacts had become positive and no one else had reported symptoms. We still did the testing in order to make sure there's no asymptomatic cases. And of those folks, all the folks we tested were, were negative, which is good news. Just also want to follow up with you on the Beaman report of in, in-school transmission, which I, I reported two weeks ago. Nothing has come from that that has fully resolved those cases. There are no further positive cases. So there's just one case, that sole case of in-school transmission at Beaman and it's been resolved. So just want to make sure I follow the folks on that. Here's our active cases. So you see in the middle column, two weeks ago, when I, when I last reported to, to, you know, to a school committee meeting, there were twenty four, now there are ten. And you can see right now, in terms of elementary schools, they're only, and preschool, there are only two active cases, which is great news. That's among staff and students. You all see there's one in the remote academy across K twelve and then one district wide staff. So in, in our school and actually our school buildings, at this point, there are only nine active cases. Am I adding this up right? Why, I guess, I guess this should say eleven, I think, now that I'm adding. Sorry about that. That should be eleven. My mistake. And then I always want to reiterate this. As I said before, we're doing a lot of things right. And our protocols are working. They're definitely helping in terms of our distance in our schools, hand hygiene and masks. Got to keep that going. The other piece I mentioned is what families and staff are doing, which is staying out, out, out of school if they feel sick. Checking with the doctor, checking with their school nurses and then all staying out of school if they're supposed to quarantine for, for any reason. These things are helping and we need to keep, keep them up and we're doing a good job on it. So I want to switch into just the pool testing, surveillance, surveillance testing pilot program, which we're going to hopefully participate in. It's not a done deal yet. There are some hurdles to, to cross, which I'll explain tonight. Just to give you a recap, a summary, and those who are, who are listening. The pool testing from the state that we will be grouping students and staff into pools of ten people or so. That would be, you know, if you think about an elementary classroom, splitting it probably into two pools. Staff, a teacher, it would be in the pool with the students. You don't sequester just staff pools. Okay? Every individual in that, in that pool and that group gets a PCR test, those swabs are analyzed together. And you come back with one result for that entire pool. That one result is positive. Then the, everyone in that pool gets a rapid antigen test, which is a fifteen minute turnaround test. And if that, if that rapid antigen test for each person is, is negative for the person, they are in school, they're, they're, they're cleared. If it's positive, they have to follow the protocols in terms of self-isolation and quarantine, they're considered a positive case. And we do contact tracing from there. This allows us to test a lot of people, allows us to get a sense of, of to what degree covid is in our schools, you know, in any way, shape and form. It's helpful in a lot of ways. And there are also some significant pieces that I'll explain now. Just quickly, it's anterior, anterior nasal swab, the short one. It's not the deep brain probe that is uncomfortable for many people. We'll have to have staff that help with administration. I'll talk more about staff in a moment. And students in certain age groups can certainly do the swabbing themselves under, under supervision. And so that's most likely what we would do as opposed to having an individual or a few test every single student. It's something that, that can be done depending on the age of the student. So the approach we would take during the pilot would be to start with GHS and Omeley students and staff. As I showed you before, and we've seen throughout the year, there are more cases at Omeley and, and GHS, they're, they're happening more regularly. Also, we know that spread is, if it's going to happen, it will be more likely in older students. And there's this, you know, there's just, there isn't, and so we're trying to do this in a way where we can actually, actually pull it off. And we believe that by focusing on, you know, essentially half of our students and half of our staff that are at across the district that are those ones who are Omeley and GHS, we can actually manage it and then do it well and do it thoroughly. We would use a six-week pilot to assess if it's helping, if it's, if it has value, if that actually given us information that's of use. And then we'd have to decide if necessary to continue beyond the six, beyond the six-week pilot. Let me share with you some of the, some of the complexities of, of the program. The testing service, service providers provide a fair bit, delivery of tests, the testing hardware, the testing, the lab processing. They provide us training for any staff we have who will be doing the work. And they're always there to, to answer questions. For us though, there is quite a bit of, of administration operations. This cannot be done by our existing staff. We cannot add additional work and burden under school nurses. They are doing plenty and so much. And we can't take them away from their top priority, which is taking care of our students and our staff and all the contact tracing and all the covid work they're already doing. So we will need additional staff to do what's in the left-hand box here. That's coordination, administration of all the program and the operations, that's managing testing logistics. That's data entry, that's test administration, that's all communication about and education about the program. That's tracking down and following up with consent forms. We have to do consent forms for, for both types of testing. And then actually administering the tests and supervising that. And then any reporting and following up for the, for the reflex of the, the rapid antigen test. So there's a lot of work. We are currently advertising for three types of staff members, maybe a total of, you know, depending how it works, six to eight folks perhaps. That's a testing healthcare professional who would oversee the entire program. We're looking for someone who is, is a nurse or that level of healthcare professional and that level of experience to manage it. Looking for a testing assistant who would be sort of follow and keep track of all the administration. That's, that's required through the program. That would be like a licensed nurse practitioner or someone who has significant experience in sort of administration in healthcare. That's, you know, between testing, tracking, data entry, that sort of thing. And then the last piece of the testing collectors. On an hourly basis, we can train them through our, the testing partners. Low, lower level of experience is necessary for that. Those we're advertising, we're trying to reach out very broadly as far as we can to find, and, and any, and sharing, you know, with all of our staff or these position descriptions with yourselves, with Department of Health, with city departments, trying to reach out because these folks aren't readily available and are probably maybe other districts may be looking for them as well. So we don't know if we'll get the staffing to be able to do this, but we are working diligently to, to do, to do so. Other piece are the costs and I'll talk about two different ways. Desi supports and will pay for the testing in the first six, six weeks during the pilot. We still have to hire and pay the staff. We estimate that to be about $29,000 for those six weeks for that, for those six to eight staff members. So the test for the, the six-week pilot would, would cost in the neighborhood of $30,000. And then, but it gets more expensive following that. So if you think of an additional six weeks, the staffing remains the same. The testing, then we have to start paying for testing supplies. That's six thousand, that's $38,000 for six weeks for just, for the tests themselves. And the, the platform remains the same. So that would be an additional $68,000 every six weeks we continue, if we choose to continue. And again, that's for, those estimates are, and projections are for testing at GHS and Omeley. Only, just have a couple of slides and then, then we can, one more slide and then I'll stop for, for questions and comments. So we're pursuing this as fast as we can, as fast as Desi will allow us to do. We've submitted their surveys and statement of interest that were due tomorrow. We're getting set up for the binax now rapid antigen testing, which is the, the follow-up testing. If a pool is positive, I mentioned we're advertising for staff members, we're seeking additional funding through grants. And then also, we've also established that we do have sufficient PPE to take, take this on. There's another informational session with Desi this week. And then also pretty soon, next week, we have to start doing outreach to families. And then also pretty next week, we have to start doing outreach to family and staff about the program. And also consent, getting consent from folks to get them tested is going to be, it's always challenging. It'll be onerous. We do want to get up to seventy eighty percent or more of folks participating at those two schools to make this worthwhile. And that that alone is a significant challenge. So this won't be simple. It won't be easy. We do think it's it's worth it to try the pilot out and see what we learn from it. And so we're making our best effort to get it going. Any questions or clarifications?
Samantha.
Thank you. And I bet when you became a superintendent, you didn't think you'd say anterior nasal swab ever in your job.
Didn't think I would talk about wastewater testing either, so there you go.
Has the job descriptions been shared with our families?
No, they have not been.
Do you think that it's worth pushing them out to our families just because, you know, there might be some people looking? Because they're not full time jobs, right? They're sort of.
Right, the the collectors aren't full time, you know, the other ones would be for that, but they're temporary. But they are they are full time or significant, you know, nearly full time, especially if we're doing those two big schools. But again, you know, listen, I I've been trying to share this widely, and that's why I shared it with all our staff and across the city. So I think that's a good idea. And I'm open to other ideas too.
Kathy.
Maybe I missed this detail, but I know you have a cost per week. How frequently would a particular student be tested?
Yeah, oh, sorry, once a week. So for example, I mean, this, these are just initial thoughts. But if you tested, you know, students on, so O'Malley on, say, Monday. You could potentially then do any follow up testing on Wednesday when they have a remote day. Okay, that sort of thing. Or if you tested students in at, sorry, at a GHS on Wednesday, then you might be able to test them again, any any retests on Friday, that sort of thing. But it's once a week, every week for each student, each student staff member in those schools.
Laura.
So my assumption is that we, there's a pool testing, if there is a positive pool test, then everyone in that pool has to quarantine. Until they can get the rapid test. Is that correct?
Right. And then the rapid test would be that would then be done very quickly. I mean, you know, we would, we we do those onsite. You know, you get a fifteen minute result. It's a result within fifteen minutes. So as long as they're coming, they come into the school or outside the school. Or we have a location where they can do that, then that would be very quick. Yeah.
I'm sort of thinking of the follow on, like, so if if there's a pool in a pool, there's a positive. Then what does that mean for the families of the people in that pool? Like, how does it, you know, from a contact, from a community health perspective? I'm just wondering.
Right. Are they at that point deemed positive and there has to be quarantining and isolation because of that, right?
Right, that's right.
I don't know the answer to that. Do you have a, do you, are you?
Yeah, I mean, that is, that that is true. So if you get a positive in your pool of ten, you need to, you don't know who it is. You can't isolate them. You can't. So you need to do do the testing of all ten straight away. So that would have been Ben saying with the bio Bionex or whatever it's called, machine onsite. That would be the antigen that we would get a rapid result for those ten people. You would see who you're positive or perhaps plural were. Those positives would then be sent off for a PCR test. And so the question will be if so we would handle it the same way. So any of the kids in the pool, say, the ten who were sitting next to or deemed to be close contacts to the probable. So at this point, it's just a probable. But we would, we would start acting on that. So any of the people that would be close contacts to the probable, so this antigen positive would have to go home and quarantine at that point, just like any other COVID exposure. So we would quickly work to identify not only the kids in that pool that that were within six feet of the kid, the positive. But do they play soccer? Are they on a community, you know, league or something outside of school? So we'd be finding all those contacts for the probable straight away. And they would have to go through the quarantine process. And I think, you know, this is one of the things that unnerves people about pool testing, you know, I might, I will be quarantining the whole school, be finding all these cases. I mean, what we see again and again and again in this population is very, very low positivity rates. So so you're not going to pick up many. I mean, but you will pick up some. And that's kind of the point of identifying early on those asymptomatic folks that you you won't know about. And and isolating them quickly and getting them out of your school community so they're not, you know, infecting others. Does that make sense? It is confusing, I know, but did I explain that? So.
I guess from, I guess. Absolutely. I guess what I'm understanding then is the process, the, you know, the sort of system that's in place to do this in which, you know, in which it all happens very quickly is going to be critical.
Right. And that's why we have a contact tracing team that works hand in hand, hour to hour with with Ben's team. As soon as anybody tests positive, whether it's with Boport or or any kind of probable, we'll start working that up.
Right. But I mean, from the school perspective, if since it's a pool, you'll have to know very quickly who in that pool.
Right. That's that slows it down. I mean, I think the DESI program is is great in that you're, you can test. Now they're allowing you to use that antigen machine to kind of test, retest the pool. Some colleges that use it and whatnot have to send it out, you know, then get all those ten kids back. And so it stays. But it's still a good tool to, you know, identify any potential asymptomatic carriers. It's a surveillance test. So, you know, my feeling is that it doesn't, it's a sampling. It's like a survey sampling. It doesn't matter if you get every kid in every class every time. So, you know, there'll be a handful of people that don't want to participate or who aren't in school that day or whatever. But it's a screenshot. It's like a sampling of your population to see what's going on. It's a surveillance tool and it's it's a relatively inexpensive, kind of efficient way to monitor and, you know, test, provide testing and surveillance. How much value it adds with such a low positivity rate in this population? You know, that's the, that's the question. And probably from an epidemiological point of view, it doesn't add the greatest value as it would say if you were doing it in a senior housing. That's where I love to do pool testing because, you know, they have much higher rates of positivity. And they're much more at risk of things going bad fast. So and they're living in congregate areas. They're they're living together in a closer closer quarters. So, you know, from a risk point of view, but if you have the opportunity through DESI where they're funding part of it and you can you can find funding for all the rest. It's definitely a valuable tool. It's just, you know, how valuable, given it's not going to show a lot. There's just not a lot of positivity in school, not a lot of cases.
We we may, we very well may find after six weeks that it's not giving us enough new information for it to be worthwhile. And then and 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 I mean, I say that hesitantly, you know, but if I'll just give you one example, and this is just, you know, just one example, doesn't mean it's what we have experienced. Watertown was doing this. Has been doing this on their own dime. And I think they had three hundred and forty pools at one point after you've done it for a little bit. And nine of those have been positive. So it's a very, very low rate, you know. And then so that's the sort of thing that trying it out for six weeks and throwing it for six weeks allows us to learn more information about can we do it? Can we keep it up? Is it helping? Is it is it useful? That's our stuff. But I don't think, I don't think we will know that until we give it a shot.
Any other questions? You want to move on?
Yep, Karen. Thank you very much, Karen. As always, really appreciate your your time and commitment and partnership. Always.
Good night, everybody.
So next on the agenda would be our follow up on our attendance report, which we gave two weeks ago. And I'm going to hand it over to Greg Bach. Who will, who he and some special guests will help us learn more about how we're supporting students with with getting to school. Greg, there you go.
Good evening. I'm gonna share out a Google presentation with you. I also shared it with school committee members about an hour or so ago. I apologize that should have gone to Stephanie in time to get that out. So that's, that is shared with you now. And Maria, I think I shared that with you as well. I spoke a lot last time, so this time I'm not going to say much because we have three people for four people tonight who have been directly involved with the actual work of you know, managing the attendance issues and and managing this in in incredibly challenging year. We talked a little bit about that last time. And I do want to point out that the the data we shared with you last time. That it is valuable to look within this year. It's a little bit less value to like, take a look at some of the comparative from prior years. So without any further delay, let me share out my screen. Do you have the ability to share, Maria?
Yes, you do.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, do you want me to say a couple of things to start? I know we talked about that and then I forgot about it.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna put it up on the screen and I figured you would be leading off.
All right, super. Good, good. We're still on the same page then.
Just need to share this out. Okay, all yours.
Thank you, Greg. So just as a follow up, as Greg said, want to have Gail Avery, who's our attendance office officer, and then also Lynn Beatty, Principal Lynn Beatty, Principal James Cook and Principal Amy Pasquarello. Just described some of our efforts, both across the district and in school and in each, at each grade span. About what we're doing to support our students and getting this, getting to school. I think I'll just add a little context on this, which is while, as Greg said, hard to determine this year because we are literally trying to be very, trying to make sure people stay out of school. If they ever have any, you know, feel so sick at all and really pushing it hard. At the same time, as you saw two weeks ago, we do need to pay attention to some important areas, specifically English language learners and also those students who are economically disadvantaged, who the chronic absentee numbers are pretty alarming. I think what you'll see tonight is we're trying to approach this both in a short term and a long term effort. Short term, you'll see a lot of sort of, you know, hand to hand or, you know, specific individual reach out, outreach, sorry, to families. And we'll talk about that. But and then also longer term, as you're aware, as Jane, Principal Cook has explained. You know, attendance is one of the three top priorities for Gloucester High School in terms of its in term of its 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 standard improvement plan. And that's really crucial. And that really starts a younger age for students. It it depends on engagement and that they have good reasons to attend high school or middle school or elementary. And part of those good reasons are that they have got close connections with with the staff, with the adults in the building. So those are all just some crucial pieces. One thing I do want to signal and want to work on, work with the committee and more broadly as we head into the next school year, I really think, and we've been talking about this a little bit internally, is how do we have a citywide campaign on attendance on every student in school every day? And that's something that I want to work with the with the school committee. We want to work with the school committee on, with the mayor, with other community partners and stress and educate and teach and and make sure all our families and our whole community are working together to make sure our kids are in school every day. If they're not there, they can't benefit from our fantastic teachers and staff. And can't really help prepare themselves or work with us to prepare them for their, prepare them for their futures. So that's an important piece and something I look forward to working with everybody on. At this point, I'll hand it back to Greg. Who I think will have Gail Avery speak about our district wide efforts.
Yep, exactly. Gail, are you ready to?
As ready as I'll ever be.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. So the last time I met with most of you, we had a discussion about Attendance Works. That is a nationwide organization that really focuses on all things attendance related. We had every intention of moving forward with Attendance Works and had gotten the approval here at the school committee level. Unfortunately, then COVID stuck around far longer than I think some of us thought it would. So unfortunately, their capacity to work with us and our capacity to work with them this year has not we haven't been able to make that happen. So there's still hope for us to continue that partnership and begin that partnership in a formal sense in the fall. But for now, we do have some some things planned and some external work that we're going to do with them. But at first, I want to talk a little bit about currently as a district where we're at. I was able to see the last meeting and essentially everything that we're seeing, it was already highlighted in your last meeting, district wide. High school students are struggling more than the elementary students, our English language learners and economically disadvantaged learners are by far struggling the most across all levels. We're seeing a significant increase in the frequency and intensity of the concerns around students with school avoidance issues and school refusal issues. That was a problem pre-COVID. It's a problem in many communities, but and it's it's an even bigger problem once we add on the anxiety around COVID and and all of the things that we're seeing there. Mental health services in the community have changed and they're very limited in a lot of new ways. Parental involvement with students is a district wide issue in our students who are struggling with attendance. Parents, in my experience, oftentimes express not understanding what's expected of their children. They're frequently unable to rise to the challenge of increasing their support as they're stretched thin already. With the implications of the pandemic on their family, you know, they have multiple students at home. They're caring for sick or vulnerable family members. They're working, they're working from home, they're working outside the home or extra jobs to make ends meet. Effective two way communication is a huge barrier and and much more important than it ever was. Particularly with our ELL population, we are definitely struggling as well as with students and families who are economically disadvantaged in that some parents don't have the means to access a meeting with us in the same way that we would having them in person. One of the biggest struggles for us this year is an increased, I mean, a substantial decrease in the involvement and the response from DCF and the courts. The Department of Children and Families and the courts have reduced their capacity and have been unable to provide the same level of support and involvement due to the pandemic. Many of our reports around attendance related concerns, particularly when that's the only fileable concern at the moment, are being screened out. Cases are subsequently closed when they're screened in and the CRA process has been significantly impacted. For example, I only have two active cases right now that are CRAs as opposed to twenty or more that I had this time last year. So our response, we started at the, in the spring of last year, right before the pandemic. We started a regional partnership with the Department of Public Health and several stakeholders in the community as well as neighboring districts. Right now, we have Beverly and Ips, which we're looking at PBD joining us as well. We meet biweekly. We've been able to identify common struggles around attendance related issues. And we've been able to partner with one another in new and exciting ways to address the issues as a community. One major outcome of this meeting was the idea of having onsite testing for students and staff, which has been implemented across the district. That was an idea that we were able to receive from one of the other communities and really get some problem solving and some, you know, advice on how to get that implemented sooner than later from them. Historically, each school has covered attendance issues in their existing meetings whenever they needed to. So for instance, the student support team would devote a portion of their time to discuss attendance issues. And what was happening is a lot of times attendance related issues maybe got, you know, rushed at the end or things like that. One outcome of our beginning to partner with Attendance Works was the idea that we needed attendance teams at each school. So this year, we've really focused on formalized attendance teams at the middle and high school level. that look at weekly and year to date attendance as well as things like class cuts, tardies, the relationship between attendance and grades. And this was the recommendation of attendance works and lays the foundation for the work that we will do when we have that partnership with them. Generally speaking, these teams include a member of the administration, usually the principal or deans, the entire guidance team and the nurses. The focus is on communication, a tiered approach to intervention and shared responsibility with the staff at each school. Follow ups and next steps are always a focus. We're sharing that burden. So it's not just me that a person has never met coming and knocking on a door or making a phone call. It's it's across the board. Everybody's making a concerted effort to utilize those relationships that have already been built to get students back into school or problem solve. When a different when any additional information or discussion is warranted, students are referred to the SST meeting, which happens in the same week, the same day at the middle school, the next day at the high school. So short and long term planning, the most exciting thing that I'm excited to share with you all is that we are planning a pilot partnership with a program called Kinvo. Kinvo is a software that integrates with school with school brains and will use attendance data as well as demographic information to allow everyone in each school to easily communicate with all families regardless of their language. Kinvo translates messages and that is text, email and phone into 80 different languages, allowing to a more than 80 different languages. Allowing two way communication that otherwise required interpreters or reliance upon external services such as Google Translate, which we know are not perfect. Furthermore, software links, the software links to our attendance data. So caregivers will have the access to more timely notification if their student is not in school or in class. And they'll have that gives them an opportunity to respond in real time. Everyone need who needs to communicate will be able to do so within one easy to use software. And essentially those messages go out in English. So if you know, the math teacher's concerned about, you know, her fourth block math class, she can email out that entire group or text message that entire group of students. It's not just the the adults either. Students 13 years and older can be texted directly. So it will allow much more bulk communication. And as I said, it's it's typed out by that teacher in English and it gets automatically translated based on what that family's language preference is in school brains. And it's automatically translated. The family can write back in their native language and we get it in English. The most exciting piece about it is it's all archived. So you know, any principal, any guidance counselor, any attendance supervisor can go into a student's record and see how many times the family's been contacted, what the response was. I could talk probably for the next hour about this program and how excited I am. I think it's going to be hugely changing. And I think when we implement this and then work with attendance works, which they are partners with one another. I think we're going to see a huge shift, but I think that communication piece now more than ever is the thing that we need. We have worked on trying to get attendance works now. Unfortunately, they are completely full. They've never been full before. And they are not willing to work with one or two schools as they had been when we first started this process. So we're looking into the 2021, 2022 school year will need to be prepared at having the entire district be part of that partnership if we're going to be requesting that. But for now, we the attendance works is offering an e-learning series that will allow, I think there are 11 of us signed up for it right now. There's a three part series where we will get a lot of the foundational directives, education and support to problem solve our issues now. So that starts in February, I believe that we're registered or should be registered this week. And we've been told that that'll save us a little money on the other end because we'll already have had that training. So essentially, you know, moving forward, what's going to happen once we do partnership, partner with attendance works or in future years? You know, we want to keep our attendance teams. They are successful. Our middle school team is rock star and we're getting so much accomplished each and every week. We're really seeing a turnaround. And the high school is is a couple of weeks behind, but doing very well as as well. We plan to continue to work with our regional partnership. We find that very, very successful. We're able to make connections within our group as well as invite other people into the group. So that's that's huge as well. And may also be help for us funding wise because we have a lot of experts in that group around grants and things like that that can help us seek additional funding should we need it around attendance issues. Attendance Works hopefully will help us with the policy rewrites and the culture shift, both in the community, but also within our schools, really changing the idea that attendance is everyone's problem and from everyone who, you know, solves the driveway out front to, you know, upper administration, it's it's everyone's focus. We also in the we're in the very baby stages of discussing an apparent and student training program to address attendance related issues. I'm finding that a lot of our parents that end up needing my intervention are really struggling with setting expectations, routines, understanding when to keep your student home, how to reinforce good attendance as well as implement consequences. So even by the time they're at 16 or even beyond, a lot of our parents are really struggling with that. So we're hoping to be able to get a program in, you know, in place that can really hold hands with families and really support them in a bigger way. So the idea is that it would be offered out to everyone, but be more focused on anybody who's in jeopardy of retention or further consequences like DCF involvement or CRA.
Thank you, Gail. Maybe that's a good opportunity to pause. That's that's the Gail really nicely summed up a lot of the district perspectives and the and the plans that are in the works. Are there questions for the district component from the school committee that we can address? We also have Amy Pascarello and Lynn Beatty and James Cook here to talk about each of the elementary, middle and high school levels. But at this moment, are there any questions for Gail about the district?
Samantha has her hand up.
Thank you. Just a quick one. The parent and student training, who like who would be running that? It sounds like there's a there's a pretty big intersection between sort of the attendance and mental health. Sort of in behavioral health. So how do you see that working?
So we've so I've been asking our regional partnership for months now to help me find a mental health service provider that could, I have said, I can fill your caseload instantly if we could hire an LICSW or an LMHC to be able to take on cases and do some case management with DCF and the courts, but also to really do that. You know, what do I say when my student has a stomach ache, but they seem fine? You know, how do I get my 15 year old to put the video games down at bedtime? Unfortunately, what I'm finding is mental health services are already very thin. So unfortunately, I don't think that we're going to be able to see that play out. We have talked about it extensively at the middle school. We have a great team of people who are willing and ready to do whatever it's it takes to get this off the ground. So right now it it's looking like we may it may be sort of an internal offering. I've I've mentioned it at one of the elementary school meetings and those staff members are thrilled as well. So people are willing and able to step up exactly what it looks like. I do think that attendance works will help us sort of not reinvent the wheel and and be able to address this in a way that you know, is evidence based and you know, people have done this before. We're not the first district in the world to figure out attendance issues. But in the event that we can't get it going, you know, we can't wait for attendance works. I think we we start where we're at. So school guidance counselors, school counselors, administration, myself, maybe having guest speakers all as part of that team.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I can't see everybody. So if you have a
And I have a question.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Gail. Two questions. One's just like a really basic. What is a CRA?
That's the child requiring assistance. So essentially the educational policy states that any student with eight or more absences in a quarter theoretically can be referred to the juvenile court for court backup in this. In general, I come from, I used to work for the Department of Children and Families and I don't believe that punitive interventions are all the rage. I don't think they solve all the problems. So my focus in in working with folks at the district level has been, you know, to do as much support in case management and social work early so that when we get to the place where we need to get the courts involved, we really have sort of nothing left to offer a family on our own.
Great. And then just the second question related to communication. The the current calls that go out, the robo calls that go out when the student is absent. Are those are those done in various languages? I'm assuming they are, but when a student is absent, does the call to the parent come in their native language?
I'm going to actually divert that to somebody other than me.
I'll take that one. The the current system that we have does translate does send messages as long as their text generation generated messages, which those automated attendance ones are. The current system that we have, however, is limited in the number of languages. And that's Gail's mention of Kinvo is it's a pretty big step because 80 languages will really move us ahead, but it's also the two way nature of the Kinvo versus what we have right now. It's a one direction. And in the future with Kinvo, will parents will be able to respond directly over text message and have it translated back in.
And that's really my hope with Kinvo is there's kind of a call to action component that needs to, you know, go in there. Right now we're sending, you know, we're making phone calls when those phone calls go unanswered. We're sending emails when those go unanswered. We're sending letters and then I'm knocking on doors. But what we know is, you know, most of us check our test text messages way more frequently than we check any of those other things. So you know, Kinvo has some really fancy data around this. That's really impressive. Around the efficacy of text messaging versus these other modes of communication. And the fact that they can that students can students and families can text back in their native language. We get it. We see exactly what they're saying in that real time is huge.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, it's just a, I wanted to clarify one thing, which is our 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 staff are communicating through the Kinvo platform to families, mobile devices. When they return that, it doesn't go to a teacher's mobile device. It goes to the Kinvo platform. So if there are any teachers out there worried that we're talking about like texting their personal phones, that's not what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay, just to
And to piggyback on that, you know, I am aware of some some people, not just within the school, but I've talked to many social workers at DCF probation department. People are worried about families and worried about students and they've set up Google voice accounts to text students and families. They've used their own personal cell phone numbers. And so this eliminates the need for that. It keeps their privacy. It it and it also archives it in the student's record as well.
Thank you.
Kathy has a question.
Yes, so I I see from a district level, there's the policy rewrites. And I know we've talked about different, you know, changes in language and and how to kind of make our language a little clearer with parents. What what suggestions are you thinking about in terms of you know, what what other ideas might help in terms of a policy for this?
So I'll be completely transparent. I don't pretend to have any additional information than many of you on this call about what's best for a policy. I can tell you my experience and you know, sort of what I've seen. But what I can say is attendance works as part of what they're going to offer us when we do partner with them. They'll review our policies and they, as the national experts, will be able to give us some feedback on where our policies are, where we need to tighten some things up and you know, and help us figure out exactly what that language needs to to look like in order to have the most clear and concise messages to families.
I think that's the key. The one of the things that I can tell you immediately is that among our different levels of tenants policies, there there are some things that aren't consistent among them. And that if we can at least begin by looking around consistent language from the time that a student begins in in preschool or kindergarten through 12th grade that that we have terminology and we have practices and policies that as much as possible, understanding that there are differences in grade level expectations, but that there is consistent language and the fact that we, you know, we do have a few things in our policies that you know, parents are not quite sure what something means and that needs to be worked out so that it's crystal clear. Expectations are clear. And so that's probably where we would begin is by a look from, you know, bottom to top through the policies.
And the snapshot that I got from attendance works, I spoke to them late summer, early fall in hopes that we would find some time to to be able to partner with them. And one of the things they really focused on from, you know, April and May, when I spoke to them or even before that to, you know, August, September, October was really, you know, parents were it put in a position where they were the teacher, like it or not. They were the ones supervising students, you know, they were they were facilitating a lot of learning. So you know, changing the way that we approach our parents and talking about partnership instead of, you know, sort of that disciplinary or that authoritative role. But really sort of how we're presenting our information and what our asks are of both students and families. I think it could go a long way in our policies.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
I think it's more for Greg, when we discussed, you know, turning around the attendance issue previously, you had mentioned that a large role for the school committee was going to be community engagement. And you know, the wider culture shift, not just in the school population itself, but you know, throughout the city, putting an emphasis on the fact that we were as a community going to try to turn this around. And so I guess my question is, is that something is that still a best practice that you think will be a component of this? And given the timeline for when attendance works is likely to onboard with us, you know, at what point do we as a committee to begin thinking about what that will look like for from us programmatically for the city?
When we spoke about that last, Gail and I had met with tenants works for some preliminary discussions and one of the very first things they talked about was, you know, a series of engagements with our community and and trainings. And and they really did highlight the fact that community leaders and elected officials needed to be, and it was crucial that they be part of that, the very first round of discussions. And then as Gail mentioned, you know, our plans to move forward with that got sidelined back in March. I would expect that the teams that attend the trainings in February and March will really be able to bring back. So there's a February 10th, March 4th and 11th, I think are the are the the three series. I would expect that by the end of that series in March, those teams will be able to provide some of that guidance for us for thinking, okay, in preparation for working with attendance work in the, you know, 21, 22 school year. These are the kinds of things we want to start putting into place. So perhaps what we could do is have no quick update from that group and that, you know, that can be charged because a number of them Lynn and James and Gail will be part of those teams. I would imagine they can come back with us with a to us with a a little timeline for how to begin with that school committee and community leader level engagement. I'm not sure where the timeline stands now. I just can tell you that that was job number one on on the attendance works list and I that was job number one on on the Attendance Works list, and I imagine it will be. And um, we should get some timelines from them in March.
And if I may add, um, session three does, the topic is partnerships that make a difference, coordinated system strategies. So that's the the third part. I do think it's it's fair to say that that will be a topic of conversation.
Great.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions?
If there are no more at this moment, um, Amy Pascarello um is with us, and she's going to talk a little bit about the elementary level and the kind of work they've been doing. She'll, she has communicated and communicates regularly with uh the rest of her uh principals and the in the other four schools. So she can speak uh not only about what East Gloucester is doing, but really about what is common practice in all the elementary schools.
Hello. Are you gonna go to the next slide?
Yep, just trying to move the uh
Sorry.
All the faces out of the way. Here we go.
I'm gonna start by talking about the current conditions at uh the elementary schools. Um, our attendance rate is slightly higher um due to the remote academy, um, to students being able to attend while they still, okay, well, our real world problems, the attendance rate in the remote academy, sorry, is higher because even when they have symptoms or in their quarantine, they can still um, attend their classes. Our overall attendance rate is at about ninety-two point six one. I believe, Greg, you presented this last week, right, or last time?
Yes.
Um, and then the ELs students are slightly lower. I do want to point out that for the hybrid or in-person um students, the attendance doesn't always affect um reflect their engagement because students who are quarantining and at home are still zooming in or on Google Meets. They're still engaging and learning from home, but they're marked absent. Um, so the rate is slightly higher, um, not a whole lot. We have a lot of new challenges this year, um, along with the whole pandemic. Um, but we are telling students to stay home if they're feeling sick, and if they come in with a sniffles, we are sending them home. So that is affecting our our attendance rate. Um, we have several students that are quarantining. Um, I have one student who is now in his third round of quarantining because um, it's his family that it's going through. So when the father is, he goes into quarantine. And the next one, luckily, we're able to engage them remotely, but that shows up as a long-term absence. Um, we have a new phenomenon this year of mental health days. A lot of parents are calling their students in for a mental health day, which is not something we've seen a lot of in the past. Um, we are discouraging that. We would like the students in school every day. Um, and we're working with families to increase their attendance um on those cases. Um, we are, tardies are up a little this year as well. Um, when we made the plan of coming to school in person this year, we eliminated the morning recess. So there's only a ten-minute window to get the entire school in class um from when the doors open and we start to take attendance. So we're doing really well. Um, I know at East Gloucester, we have most people in about eight oh two, eight oh three, but then we, they start, the late students start coming in. Um, so that's a factor, but we're doing the best we can in getting them in and ready to study as soon as possible. Our response to all of this, um, we have a daily review of our attendance. We have a kind of a modified attendance team at the elementary school. We're a little smaller than the middle and high school, but it does consist um consistent, every day of our school nurse, the administrative assistant and myself. Um, we often pull in special educators, school psychologists and adjustment counselors whenever needed. And then in those larger cases, we will reach out to Gail for the um attendance, inner attendance supervisor role. Um, we look at each case, case by case. Every case is different. We're looking for patterns. We're seeing who's a close contact, who might be in quarantine, who might be um on vacation or taking a mental health day. So we watch each case. We reach out to families and we use translation services when necessary. Um, we have worked with Adam Mayo on occasion when there are significant um attendance issues to see if we can get a child on a bus so that they can get here on time, and he's done a wonderful job kind of working his magic to get them there. And we do have a SST team, student support teams, that we talk about those chronic level students that really are having a hard time and try to discuss, is it school avoidance? Is it anxiety? Is it other things? And we bring in support so for those students and families. We talked about who was on the team. Um, so our short and long-term plans. Um, the attendance teams will continue and the parent outreach, of course, will continue. Um, I look forward to more streamlined outreach for um with the parents, particularly with translation services. We currently use um Class Dojo, but we can't archive the messages and really streamline it. So I look forward to that. We're coming into our abilities. Next year, we will continue to uh continue our outreach and we are also looking into community partners for some remote learning centers. I know the YMCA is working on possibly opening something like that for students that are having hard times um with the remote part of learning. So we're looking into expanding that for this year. Um, and we will always work towards supporting the social emotional supports of our students and families and prioritizing attendance um and getting them in as soon as they can safely and be in in school, yeah.
Any uh questions for Amy for the elementary level? Okay.
I'm not seeing any, but I do have one, just one little question. Now, how prevalent is um transportation uh as an issue? Um, you mentioned that 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 this, that.
Yeah, so far, all the transportation issues that we've had to solve, we've been able to. Um, I can think of only one case that it didn't work out, and it was the parent made a different arrangement. Um, so they've been, he's been able to be creative about which bus stop they go to or um switching which bus they go on, and he's done a great job.
Thank you.
You've teed it up twice now, Amy. I just have to to chime in. Adam, every single time I've called Adam, even with some very complex um issues, uh, he has just dug right in and figured out a way. It's it's pretty amazing.
There was one student uh that we, he provided a bus stop and it wasn't working out, and I thought, well, we're not going to make that happen. He came back within ten minutes with an alternative. He's he's done a phenomenal job.
Yep. Thank you, Amy. And uh Lynn Beatty from the middle school.
Hello, everyone. Nice to be here. Um, Gail and Amy have talked about a lot of the similar kinds of things that are going on at the middle school. So um, looking at our numbers, um, our overall attendance um for in-person altogether was um is ninety-three point four four. Um, and it splits into ninety-three point oh four and ninety-four point nine nine from the hybrid to the remote. So similarly to what Amy mentioned, that we definitely have um slightly higher attendance in the remote, which also we think is attributed to the fact that kids are staying home to quarantine um and or are sick. Um, that's not the case in remote. They can still come to school unless they're very sick, of course. Um, we do have a discrepancy between our um ELL students, with thirty-three of them that are classified as ELL and not FLEPPED um at eighty-two percent attendance. Uh, that's something we've been working on again. Um, COVID comes into play, quarantine comes into play, Wi-Fi hotspots come into play. Um, you know, more so to some extent with that population. Um, and so I think that's, you know, we're still digging into it, but that that tends to be um part of the issue. Uh additionally, we're looking at Wednesdays. Um, our initial hypothesis was that um it felt like a lot of kids were absent on Wednesdays and not other days, but we found that the discrepancy there was very small. Uh, we're still looking at that because for some kids um who are accustomed to coming to school Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, there are some connection issues around Wednesdays. Um, and and remote overall where kids, it's tried to, um, they might pick or choose which classes they come to, um, come for the day. But um, you know, go to some classes, not others. So we're we're digging into that as well. Um, we uh, you know, because this is the the whole purpose of wanting kids in school, we're looking at the correlation between high attendance and failing grades. And there are a couple of statistics here that you can see are um quite significant. If we've got kids absent over twenty days, sixty percent of them um have at least one failing grade. And even over ten days, forty-one percent have at least one failing grade. Um, so it's um, that that's a big concern for us, uh, whether they're, you know, absent or not completing work. We're looking at both of those aspects. Um, and then comparatively, if you look at our attendance from last year, we're not hugely far off. We're at ninety-four point three four, so about a percent down. Um, but you can see our um English language learners were much more connected with school and attendance last year than they are this year. Um, so we're down about ten percent for them this year. Um, we also have similar kinds of of things going on. Our weekly attendance team, which is our guidance staff, Gail and our nurses and me meet, go over the attendance for the week. Um, the, our administrative assistant pulls it all together, reconciles. Um, you know, when kids come in late or tardy, so all of that's organized for us for those meetings. Um, we're trying to do, we've always done calls, emails, letters, meetings. We've really upped the ante on the numbers of those that we're doing. Um, in addition to that, we're adding some incentives. Um, I'm gonna just put a plug in for Ace because uh just last week, I had a conversation with a parent who was waffling, wanting to have her kid go to school in the remote model because, you know, he was nervous about coming into school sometimes, and he had been in the remote model in the fall. Didn't work so well for him, so I had called to say, hey, we really want to keep him in school. Um, I promised him a visit with Ace. If he came into school the next day, he came into school the next day. So um, so Ace is uh definitely worth his weight in. I don't know what, but we're keeping him. The uh parent education program that we've talked about um the year before last, Jeff Distino and Graham Apple uh put together a vaping diversion program. We're thinking about it in the same way where we have some information for the kids and for the families on the impact long-term of not getting into the, keeping a routine of coming to school on a regular basis at this stage of their lives. Um, we have not started the whole framework on that, but that's, that's an intention for this year. Um, and uh our analysis of absences, failing grades, et cetera, is is in the works, and we're working on a student survey to try to, you know, get some information directly from the kids about how they're feeling about school, you know, if they're not coming, why they're not coming, if they're coming, what brings them in. Um, and our involvement, uh while our SST is involved at the next level, the the people who do the work on a weekly basis specifically with attendance are, as I mentioned, um guidance counselors, me, the assistant principals, Greg and um Mike Bernice, the data manager, has been extremely helpful to us. Um, and of course, Gail. I don't know how I left your name off that. So. Um, so we're, you know, I think I've sort of said along the way, our attendance team is going to continue. It's um, it it is a great team, and we get a lot done, and it's um going in a tremendous direction very quickly. Um, parent outreach has to be part of it. The guidance staff is um well-versed in holding presentations. Um, sometimes not too many people come, but we do want to continue to do that, and they um make a lot of phone calls and meet with a lot of parents on a regular basis. Uh, and our data analysis is getting better and better. Um, just trying to figure out what questions we have based on the data we have. Um, very hopeful that kinbo is going to provide multiple additional layers for us um to be able to sort and filter and and try to get to the bottom of the patterns that we have um and and how we can resolve them. Um, so we'll continue on the things that we've started, the analysis, the education program. Um, I, my whole team is attending the Attendance Works webinar, um going over the next, I think, three, four, month and a half anyway. Um, so we're excited about the learning that we'll have there. Um, and then we're going to continue to come up with other incentives in addition to Ace um to help. Um, so our initiatives also multi-year, I I hoping that all of these things can continue over time. Um, that it's not just a one-shot deal. Of course, it would be leveling if the problem disappeared and we didn't have to do it. Um, but it's, it's going to be a long road, so we're, we're going to keep at it.
Thank you, Lynn. Any questions for the middle school?
I can't see you, so just speak up.
Uh, I don't see hands. Uh, James. James is here to talk about the high school.
Yes, thank you, Greg. So um.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, James, my hand or whatever, you can't see here. Um, thank you so much so far for all the um presentations, but um Lynn, I'm hoping that, you know, Ben yourself and um with Ed and um the community pack will discuss some of the grants. Don't forget, we got a grant that you can use some money on. We can't pay salaries, but we can use money, supply some of the programs, some of the things that you need to initiate. Don't forget, we need to staff that, especially with your attendance team. So I wanted to remind everyone that, you know, we're working with a a great amount that he committed. Uh, this is um DA Jonathan Blodge's office. Um, we received a grant through the um Community Impact to help that, and he wants to start with the O'Malley School, which is, you know, a middle school. So um we, anything that you need, please let us know. And Ben's, you know, um, let us know, and this way we can get that going. And what you said, we can't do salaries, but that's a great thing because you have the people, but you might need things. And it's a great avenue to where we can get some of the equipment that you need, some of the, you know, programs, translations or things that you might need. And so that would be a great um asset to work together with, okay?
Yeah, thanks, Mira, for mentioning that. Um, Lieutenant Nicoso and I were in touch a while ago, and they, um, he's connected with a couple of our guidance counselors. Um, he put together a a plan that um I suggested we include attendance on. Um, so that is part of the plan, and we'll, we'll work on that with him.
And we're also, also another follow-up is that, um, we're setting up a meeting with the principal of the Breed Middle School, Lynn, who was the, where they first had the All-Star Program that was supported, but that's supported by the district attorney. And so Lynn and I are going to meet with with uh the principal there in the in the coming week, uh coming couple, couple of weeks.
That's great. Thank you.
James.
Yes, that's great. Good, good transition to the high school because uh, you know, like many, many of the other um things you're hear about, there's continuity, uh particularly between the middle and the high school and in some of our approaches and um that not only comes through uh my communication with Lynn, but also Gail being a a conduit for those uh best practices that we can share with each other. So at the high school, um, you know, as the data has shown, uh the high school, Gloucester High School, as well as other area North Shore uh high schools have faced additional uh challenges with attendance this year. So through January eighth, our in-person attendance rate is eighty-four point six three percent uh overall. Um, that's the in-person rate. And the overall attendance rate, where you also factor in the remote rate, is at eighty-two point eight nine percent. Uh, last year, we were at ninety-one point five percent uh for the high school. Um, you know, one of the things worth keeping in mind, uh Lynn mentioned earlier, is hybrid students, students who are expected to be in person but who may be quarantining, um, uh may have tests pending um uh for various reasons, might be at home. Those students may attend a synchronous Google Meet or Zoom um or otherwise participate through the Google classrooms in the learning activities that day. Those students are marked absent. Um, so um those students and their participation um in learning is not accounted for um in the, in the, in the rate, in our attendance rate, because they're not physically present in the building. And that's a really important number for um the administration and the nurses to keep an eye on. So I just wanted to make that note. Um, uh, and that's been very helpful for us. Having those points of engagement has been really helpful for students who are isolating, quarantining, um symptomatic students, uh but who can otherwise engage in learning. Um, the uh very acute problem that we're facing is our remote attendance rate. That remote attendance rate is a combination of the Friday uh remote attendance for hybrid students and the daily remote attendance for students in the remote academy. Similarly to to the comment above, uh remote academy students are able to complete their remote work. Sometimes without, uh, they won't log in to the meet for attendance purposes, but will carry on with their attendance. So a key element that Lynn mentioned that we've also keeping a close eye on is the correlation between attendance problems and uh student progress academically, their grades. So we're uh right now, uh our first semester ends on Friday. So next week we'll begin or we'll continue from our term one data. And then we'll have our term two data as well and see those areas in those students for whom the lack of attendance is also correlating with a lack of academic progress. So and again, like the other levels, the attendance rate is a greater issue for our English learners as well. And so you'll hear, you'll see in the coming slides, some of the things we've done to pay even closer attention to interventions for our English learners. So that's our current situation. So our response, our responses consisted of a mix of things that of deepening and improving things that we have been doing and some new features as well for this year and some new commitments. So we've increased our broadcast communication about attendance and engagement. So that includes reminders from me that go out to all families, sometimes targeted at remote academy folks and students and their parents. Sometimes for the whole community. And then our teachers have really stepped up in regular communication in their weekly emails and outreach. There's been a real tremendous growth area and something that's been, I think, a real point of pride for us is the the increase in communication that teachers have directly with students. Because it is often, you know, as Gail said earlier, rather than punitive approaches, it is really the relationships that help us reengage students. And that's from teachers, that's from counselors and other support people in the building. And then there's targeted communication, you know, the targeted messages for particular students and parents with progressive intervention, again, starting with teachers, school counselors, adjustment counselors, and moving up to administrators and to Gail's interventions through targeted communication that is specifically tailored for certain pop, the students in certain populations, including English learners. So we have weekly attendance meetings similar to those that Lynn mentioned earlier and Gail mentioned before that. We are a few weeks, O'Malley had got theirs up and running a couple of weeks before ours. Their features are very similar, including the kinds of interventions that we're looking at. We might want to do some increased information gathering about what the history is for certain families. It could culminate in making home visits to folks. Can include functional behavior assessment of absentee, intruency, DCF consultation. Although DCF might not be, as Gail said, taking on cases, consultation is important. And then for students, we need to study further, those students are referred to our SST, our student study team. That weekly attendance meetings are Thursday, student study team then meets on Friday and takes up many of those issues. Then we're intervening with students through counselor meetings. We're setting up success plans with students and families that they sign on to. We bring students in during the time they would otherwise have been remote into the remote engagement centers that we have in the cap, in the lecture hall and in the library. Our bridge program is a way of getting students to reengage with learning. And then we've begun a partnership with JRI and their Unity Center right on Elm Street downtown, where we've targeted a group of students who are doing remote learning and also engaging Unity's mental health programming. So that's helped us reengage some students who who otherwise would not not be engaged. And then our student study team has meetings that are specifically dedicated to our English learners and to interventions related to our English learners. And there's where we partner with our ESL teachers and really focus on the acute needs of that population. So that's our elements of our current response. I couldn't actually fit all of our response on there. So there are conversations with other principals, including administrators in Beverly, Ipswich, Marblehead, Denver, Salem, and Swamp Scott about their approaches and problems. The monthly meetings that Gail mentioned earlier with the regional team. And and newly, Gail and I will be meeting with Judy Crocker of Safe Roots to Schools about the transportation component and to see if there are any, anything we can look at in terms of transportation to help with this. So as I said, couldn't fit everything on the slides, but those are our current things. And then we've got our short and long-term plans of what will continue. So we'll continue this broadcast and targeted communication. We'll include, we'll keep the attendance team meetings and those interventions. And then the the relationship between the attendance team and our student study team, the SST. We'll expand next year into and this year, as I said, next week, we'll be analyzing our semester attendance and failure data to inform our next round of interventions with students. And we've adjusted our grading policies to make sure that any student who reengages, even if it's a full year course, is able to come in. And we have a plan for that student for the second half of the year, continuing on potentially into our summer resources that we're putting in place and that and including some grant funding for that. The team, as we heard about before, will be attending those attendance works workshops in that three-part series along with Gail and the O'Malley team partnering district in that kind of district sequence. And then we'll be honing the attendance team intervention strategies using that feedback that we get from the seminar, applying that immediately to the work of the attendance teams. Looking ahead, as we have, Attendance Works and their multi-tiered systematic approach that you've heard about previously, that'll include the community, you know, as Joel's question earlier mentioned, parents, students, individual schools, what's happening in the classroom and what support people are doing. And then revisiting policy and what can they, how can they help us make sure our data analysis is really sharp? So those are the things we're looking toward going forward, very similar to what you heard from Lynn and Amy and Gail earlier. So that's our current situation, what we're doing to address things currently and then what we're looking at moving forward in the years to come.
Any questions? Kathy?
I have a question because the motto at the elementary in the middle school have the students in for the majority of the day. Where at the high school, it's three hours and three hours, right? So they're in halftime. Do you think there's some kids that maybe just don't want to go to the bother of coming in for a shorter timeframe? I mean, I just wonder if there's any correlation between, you know, the length of the school day versus rushing home and then getting back on. Is it easier just to stay home and and do the remote in the afternoon and not be there physically in the morning? Then, you know, maybe there's anecdotal evidence or or talk or or nothing at all.
Yeah, so I think high school is different in the sense that when you miss a block, you're like, you miss that class, right? Like entirely for that day. So, right, so so there's the incentive to come in is because you're going to be in person in those four classes. And if you miss that part of the day, you're you're missing those four classes. So rather than thinking of it as three hours of time and yeah, that's too short, I'm not going to bother. I what you're with, you know, students know that they're they're missing that time. Now, I will say, however, that the ability of students to get on, stay home and engage remotely in some manner certainly does lead to some absences. And other districts who have set their days up differently are seeing that even more acutely. Students who are supposed to be hybrid opting to fully, right, just stay home for the full day and engage remotely. That's a, that is a high school issue, right? And then high school students are less supervised at home as well. So do they in fact engage? And to what degree does that engagement translate into the effect of progress academically? Is a problem that all the principals talk about. I think we're we're not seeing it quite to the degree that some of the other schools have as, you know, in terms of the prioritizing what our major problems are. But but certainly it is the case that sometimes students for reasons other than quarantining and other than being symptomatic may choose to attempt to engage their classes remotely on a given day rather than coming in in person. But what we know is when students do come in in person, that learning and their progress is so much more effective than than it is when they they're engaging remotely. Though we're happy to have the option that students can engage remotely. It does help with the, you know, especially in the quarantine and isolating and symptomatic situations, it keeps them connected. So you could see even in listening to me, it's a difficult tight rope to walk in 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 how we use that remote time.
Thank you.
Any, any further questions?
James, Laura and Gail, really appreciate your, all your work on this.
Matt has been here alongside too. I don't know if he had anything to add.
We have him here about the building, about the swing space.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, thank you very much. It's been very informative and we appreciate it. And we've got a lot of work ahead of you and it's a sort of a difficult year to be talking about attendance. But hopefully next year, things will be a little bit more normal.
Thank you for having us.
Gail, thank you, James and Amy.
We were going to get in a budget update and it's nine twenty. We've still got a couple of action items that are, I've got to be, and we got an executive session to talk about a couple of negotiations. Is it, would there be a problem if we just tabled the budget update?
I I was going to recommend that. So I mean, I, yeah, so if the committee wants to discuss that, I was, I was on the same wavelength as you, Jonathan.
Okay.
I'll also point out that almost every member was at the BNF meeting where we went through, when we, where we went through it. So I think.
Yeah. Okay, so so without objection, I'm going to table the budget, the the twenty twenty-one budget update. And it may, we'll, we'll push it off to our next meeting in February when we will also get a presentation of the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. So that may actually be helpful. So we'll move on to our next item, which is committee reports. Kathy, would you like to give us a synopsis of BNF?
Sure. Given that a lot of our meeting was about the budget, we will table that. We went through, I think also as part of the budget, when we do talk about that at our next meeting, we did go through an analysis of what expenses this year are covered under the the grants that are available to us, a lot of the COVID relief grants. And and then what has come out of the general fund to help understand what the current budget is funding and helping us meet the demands or meet the requirements of the hybrid learning model and the remote model compared to what has been funded by grants that, you know, and the number is is pretty substantial. It's, you know, really talks about what investment we've made to make this year work for many, many different families and what works for for everybody, as well as helping teachers in terms of distance in their classroom and number of students. So that, so I recommend anybody look at our packet for that breakout. The other piece that we that to bring up is the is the motion. You want me to talk about the motion of the E-rate?
Sure, let's let's get that out of the way.
Okay, so, um, so the, so we've talked about funding that came through the E-rate program and Comcast. This has to do, and Grant, I think, is as an attendee, but it has to do with a major project to expand our our capability and our infrastructure. So the motion is to to accept funding from Comcast Enterprise Fund and E-rate, and I so move.
Second. Is, do we want to have Grant just give a quick update on on what that is? He's here, are you?
I don't, I don't think Grant's here.
He's in the, he's in the attendees, Grant. Would you like to put in your two cents on this or?
Yes, I can speak to that. Yeah, so we were able to leverage funding from the E-rate program, which is from the federal government for schools and libraries for maintaining internet service and secondary equipment. In conjunction with the Comcast Enterprise Fund that the city has access to, we were able to procure two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of wireless hardware at zero cost or operational budget. So we are going to be rolling that out, actually already started prepping it for deployment. So we'll have better coverage and better throughput through all our wireless network across the entire school district. So it's a wonderful program and I'm very glad that we got the equipment.
So the motion is accept funding from Comcast Enterprise Fund and the E-rate. And as as Grant just said, it'll be going to buying equipment that which our staff will install, which will greatly improve our wireless network. Is there any discussion? Okay, Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Mayor taken?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Yes, unanimously. Thank you very much. Now I'd like to take out of order.
Just so for the record, so since I'll leave myself on mute, when we get our cables and we're all complaining, let's just smile a little bit this time because, yeah, you know, it's got to come out of somewhere. You know, it's not like it's a gift from heart. We all pay those high bills and we don't know how, how much we're paying. So at least, you know what, at least we got something back. So when someone says something, we see some more educational programs that wiring that then actually can work in this city because not everyone's does, I'll smile a little bit, but not that much.
Good point. One last thing, Jonathan, I just want to point out to the committee that our Building and Finance Subcommittee will be on February twenty-second this coming month, which is a little bit later than our usual third Wednesday in the month.
Because it's school vacation week, right?
Correct, yeah.
All right, I'd like to take out of, out of order because Mr. Dunn is here to report out on the, the the completion of the the RFP Review Committee for the swing space for to house the the Veterans Memorial School population for the next two years. And they've completed their work and they're, I believe, they've made their recommendation to the mayor today. And and it is also in our purview that we need to weigh in on this, this issue at this point. So Matt's here and Melissa and Kathy were both on the, on the review committee. And I believe John Dunn is here to present. Thank you, John, for, I'm sure you're just thrilled with the getting to see the school committee in action for.
And that's, and that's exactly why I've always wanted to be a finance director within the school department.
Well, there you go. So so you met today and you you made a recommendation, did you like to?
So we did. So I was going to actually present an hour and a half as to, you know, how the city procures services, but I'm going to kind of push this down a little bit. So what, what we do is if we have to procure or or services for real property, we have to use an RFP process. And that's exactly what we did here. The RFP process basically puts out some initial requirements for what the city is looking for. And that was done basically with information that came from the school department in terms of, you know, general space for the swing space. And, you know, generally how, you know, each of the departments and the the spaces, including the. the various grade spaces and acceler, you know, other spaces that were required. That went out in an RFP, RFPs were responded to in mid-December of twenty twenty. We did receive two responses. Certainly one of the responses we expected to get, which was from your diocese of Boston and Old Family Parish for St. Anne's. We did also get a response from Pathways for Children. So during our review, the mayor had appointed a review committee that consisted of of Ben Lumbus, myself, Kathy Clancy,
Melissa.
Dan Born, John McCourt, Councilor John McCarthy. Who am I forgetting?
Matt.
Melissa Texera and Matt and, and Matt Fusco, most, most importantly. So we reviewed the submittals, the two of them. We went out and took a look at both locations along with representatives from Dorn Whittier. We then met three more times to discuss the pros and cons of, of the submittals. And really what it came down to was how much space was available in either of the two proposals. You know, we know we had, you know, success in the past with St. Anne's and as swing space for West Parish. We were very happy to get a second proposal from Pathways for Children. But in the end, as we went back and forth, it really became apparent to us that that the space that was offered by Pathways was just not going to be big enough to absorb all the things that were necessary in the movement from Beth's Memorial. So, you know, in the end, the, the what our responsibility was as an evaluation committee was to look at the presentation as to what was being offered. And as we met, we really kind of came down to the fact that, you know, the offering was most suitable by St. Anne's. In terms, in terms of looking at the monthly rental, they were very close. So that was not huge, but you know, in terms of how you evaluate an RFP, it is what is most suitable and, and the committee unanimously got to the point that the most suitable space was the one that was offered by St. Anne's. And unfortunately, there was just not enough space that was offered by Pathways.
Do you want to add anything, Matt?
We, you know, the St. Anne's site sits directly within our, I got a lot of families that live around the St. Anne's site. So that was, that made it very attractive. We can fit the entire building. Every classroom will be accounted for on the move from veterans to, to St. Anne's. We might even pick up a couple of other spaces as well. So it's, it's, we might even have more space at St. Anne's. So, so that's, that's also been attractive to us as well.
Are there any questions? Kathy and Melissa, you were both on the committee. Do you want to add anything?
Well, I, I think John and Matt have summarized about, well, Melissa, maybe you should talk because my dog is barking.
I'll talk while my dog's not barking, but that might change as well. Um, so I, what it really came down to was space. I mean, in the middle of a public health crisis, I just want to add because I think if we didn't have this crisis, we might've had a little bit more of a conversation about how we could utilize space, but because we do value our space right now and because the future is unknown of what school is going to look like in the fall. We really were looking for space and it was, there was a significance difference. It wasn't like we're talking one or two classrooms. We're talking half the school. I think, John, you can correct me if I'm wrong, or Ben or Matt, I think Pathways only offered six or seven classrooms where we needed thirteen and that didn't include the additional space we needed for other services. So there, there was a, a large difference in the space needed. And if you go by the RFP, we were given these evaluation forms. And if you stick right to the form, you know, it asks you if you meet the criteria or if you don't. And Pathways clearly did not meet the criteria in the majority of what we evaluated on. So it does, it comes down to space and Matt was just so happy to, to know that he was going to have all the space he needed it under one roof, which we know is important for not only our students to have a normal student life or student year, but also for collaboration for our teachers and all the administrative work that needs to be done as well. So I, I mean, there's so much more we could probably say, but I don't know that it needs to be said. I mean, space, it comes down to space. I'm sure Ben and Matt can talk more educationally. But for me, it was the space.
Samantha, you have a question or comment?
So, um, when looking at Dorn Whittier's summary of sort of the work that needs to be done, when we're voting tonight, are we voting to say like, yes, we'll do that work? Or is that sort of another sort of process?
Well, so, oh.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, um, so what they put forward to us is a, I know, a, a list in a sense, it's a, they went, their team went through the whole entire building. You know, every single floor, every single room and the roof and everything, and essentially identified every single thing that could be fixed. And that's how you see that, that dollar amount of over $600,000. And then, and, or they, they, they identified everything. The WG Rich team then did a quick estimate on all those things as, as they described in the memo from Dorn Whittier. The process, that isn't, that doesn't mean we have to need to do all those things. There are going to be something, there, there will be a number of those things that we choose not to do because they aren't essential. You know, for, I'll give you, in one, one instance, I talked over with Brad Doris, we don't need us every single, you know, window operational. Okay. So we have to, so we'll have to pick and choose on those things. We do want to be frugal here. We don't want to spend when we're unnecessary, where it's unnecessary. And another piece of that is there are definitely items on the, on their, what they've identified that we would expect the arch diocese to pay for as well. So, you know, so that process is, you know, going through the list with them, understanding what they're talking about, understanding from WG Rich, what it takes to do those things, negotiating with the diocese about which ones we would do, which ones they would do. So there will be a fair bit of, of just work on nailing that down and we expect that, that, that price to come down quite a bit. Also, I think it's a fairly good bidding environment, talking to folks on the project team recently. And so that may help as well.
Yeah. I mean, one, one benefit of St. Anne's, I would imagine is that we've already put, you know, over a million dollars into that building five years ago. So, you know, when I saw that initial, you know, over $600,000 to put more money into it, I was, I was a little afraid. So who, who, um, who would decide what is essential to move for?
I think, so just the process of, that we're in the middle of right now is this. We, you'll remember back, I, I can't remember when it was, back in the fall. We voted to ask the city to provide swing space and sent a letter to the mayor asking for that. The city, it's a city project. The school committee, just like building the new school is a city project in that we're not paying for it out of the school budget. The, the city's paying for it out of, well, out of the money. We get to sign, we, we get to weigh in at different points, like when we weighed in on approving the site for the new school, essentially this is the same point. We're weighing in approving the site. As far as the finances and, and, and the hiring of people, that's, that's a city that'll be, be handled by, I assume by the city and the city con, people that are under contract with the city and overseen by, by DPW to some extent. It's not going to be overseen by us, the, the work that's done. So, and so that's, that's the process.
And so DPW would decide who does the renovations? Who?
Well, no, they'll, they will, John Duncan, John can explain that.
So again, this gets a little bit complicated, but the, the city appropriated $4.2 million for, you know, ancillary aspects of this entire project. And that includes swing space, relocation of the ball field, demolition, and then remediation of the space at East Gloucester. You know, the expectation generally was that swing space was going to cost us about a million bucks. And that's basically where we are. So in terms of rent and what we have to, what we reasonably expect to do in terms of internal cosmetics to the building with some, you know, electricity and some plumbing, we're going to end up pretty close to that million dollar expectation. So, you know, that is ultimately, to be truthful, a, a city, you know, a city decision to spend, spend that money. You know, and hopefully this all come in less than what we're, what we're seeing in terms of expectations, but yes, we spent a fair amount of money back many years ago, not many years ago, but when we went in with West Parish. And there are some cosmetic things, just like anything else, it has to be done to a building over time. And we're going to do that and make sure that Matt Fusco and, you know, his entire community can have the best two years that they could possibly have in swing space.
Any other questions? Laura?
So this may be, this may be outside the realm, but just thinking about, so we use you know, the swing space for West Parish, if we choose it tonight, or if we confirm it tonight, we'll be using it for this. And then we have a third, hopefully a third school rebuilding project in the future. Which may or may not require a swing space, which may or may not come into this, you know, it may not look like this at all. And I understand that. And it's also in a different part of the city. But I'm wondering if we invest again in this space. If there's, if there's any way to put any, again, I don't know if this is a possibility, but to put some sort of a something in the agreement that, you know, we've now invested, you know, when, you know, these, this money at, you know, in, in these phases for these projects. And if we come back in a few years for our final elementary school project, which again, may not happen, is there some way to sort of be sure that we can recoup some of this in some way, in the, in the way that the, the building is being maintained? That we're not repairing again, things we may be repairing now.
John?
No. I'm sorry, but no. So we have, you know, we hopefully, we have a lease for two years with an option for or, or, excuse me, 28 months with an option. But there's no way for us to be able to say that we're entitled to something seven, eight, 10 years out from now. I mean, that's, that's just not, in order to do that, we would have to pay for that. So yeah. Sorry to say that, but that's, that's where we are.
I thought that could answer. It's just we're, you know, we are putting a lot of money into this building.
Good, good question, good question. And in, in truth, we've already put the money in, you know, a fair amount of money into the building. And we're kind of reaping that benefit. You know, you know, five years later.
Yeah. I was, um, I mean, I think this is, you know, I was pleased to hear, you know, in terms of the systems, you know, the, the higher price tag seven or eight years ago, I think, I think it'd be eight years ago when they did the work. You know, though, there are a lot of systems there, you know, electricity, plumbing, security, or the safety, that sort of thing. And those are, you know, still operational and still able to be used, technology, sort of thing. So that's, that's, that's good. And, and, and I'm pleased to see that. It doesn't lower the fact that, you know, five years hence, a building needs, you know, you know, remediation and, 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 you know, and repairs. And that's just, but it's hard to, hard to get around that. And it would, and it's, it's necessary to, you know, fully occupy the building. But as I said, we know we can work with them, work with the contractors to minimize as much as we can. I think that all, it's, it's among, it's a, you know, the, the twin goal of being frugal and, you know, putting together a place that where the sorry, the veteran school really, you know, benefits from, you know, and, and those are, I, I think we can do some work to, 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 you know, best achieve those twin goals.
Also, that building, we spent $1.2 million and we had to stop because if you spend or do a little bit more than you have to go way up to code. Elevator, et cetera, et cetera. So actually could have used more. It was a, it was a school to begin with, an old school, and it's not being used. It hasn't been used. It hasn't been used since the last time we used it. So a lot of it will be cosmetic because it's not like it's been brought down or used. Rechecked to make sure, you know, furnace, water, everything's running, which the, you know, DPW, they all took a, a look at what's caused. It's the same thing when you rent a house and you leave it and you want to go back or summer home, you don't get your money back. And the only thing you would get back is a deposit if you rented it permanently. But if you temporarily rent something, you don't get your money back. And unfortunately, that's on everything. And you know, would have been fine, but it, it, the fact is it's an empty school. It's been used before. And I was on the city council and when I approved that, I would have never approved that if I had known, like I said, it wasn't going to be, continue to be a swing space because that's how we said, I says $1.2 million and someone else's school, when we have schools, we could have done something with, and they explained to us that that it's a necessity and we could have spent more, but we didn't. And the fact that it will be a squint space again. And that's how we voted, that that's going to continue as we're, if we're lucky to get more MSA loans, that we would use that as a swing space. So that's when we agreed and then things were turned around, the traffic, so the buses could be picked up and the neighborhood loved it. Everyone thought it's going to be, no, it's, but you know what? They used to how half of the day, like in East Gloucester, half of the day you go this way, you can go that way. People get used to it. We had the lights, we had some things. But the best thing about what I truly enjoyed is that the kids could, I see them walk into the library right there. Burden's Field was right there. And then they got to walk to the city hall and go to the auditorium and visit people. Let's hope that by then, you know, COVID and we have a little bit of that, you can walk to the library and Odd Haven and so many things. And, and I think the teachers enjoyed it too. I really do. I know the neighborhoods did. I know that the senior complex is Hammond and then seen the kids run in the Burden's Field and working on the backyard growers little, because it's not like they missed out. The backyard growers actually still did the vegetable garden for them. They still did all these things. And so it really was, it really was a nice turnout. The teachers that used it from West Parish and the kids. So you know, I think that we're fortunate that it's empty because they're going to, they're going to sell it sometime. It's not going to be a school anymore. So right now we're lucky. So the, I don't know. And let's hope that we do get another one and maybe Beeman or whatever it is, we expand a different way. But as of today, I think that's the best alternative we have. And it's my money, the city's money. So if I'm saying yes.
Any other questions? I would, I would just like to say that we, we are lucky that we have the option of having swing space. Because it gives, gives us more options when on construction, you don't have to go far, just go to Manchester. And they were desperate to try to find swing space at the beginning of their elementary school project and they couldn't find it. And, you know, they managed it to keep the kids in the, in the, on the site while they built the school around it and they're, they're still doing that. So those kids have been on a construction site for the last two, two years. So the fact that we had the option of, of some swing spaces is, is a good thing. the fact that we had the option of, of, of some swing spaces is, is a good thing. And so, well, if there's no more questions of the committee, we need a motion.
I'll make the motion, Jonathan. Um, I move that the Gloucester School Committee accepts the recommendation of the Saint, and, as, of Saint Anne's as the location for the Veterans Memorial School and School Community as swing space during the construction of the new East Gloucester and Veterans School slash Veteran's School.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Joel.
Thank you. So, I feel like tonight, the school committee is again being forced to vote on an issue for which we have no real choice. And whether this was by accident or by intention, I just think it's unacceptable to keep getting put in this position. On this particular situation, in October of last year, um, the program subcommittee briefly discussed, you know, the potential of using excess space at GHS and O'Malley. The subcommittee and the superintendent agreed, because of, you know, the ongoing COVID pandemic, might not be able to sacrifice space in our buildings. And so we really shouldn't be looking at those options for the swing space. At that same meeting, the superintendent explained in both prepared slides and his oral presentation that the issue of swing space would come up again, because the Building and Finance Subcommittee would be developing the criteria for this thing. Or a request for proposals went out. He also explained that when proposals came in, it would be both the Building and Finance Subcommittee and the EG Vets Building Committee that would vet those responses and make a recommendation to the full school committee. Unfortunately, none of that was true, none of that was accurate, and none of that happened. Instead, without any input from the school committee, at least publicly that I know of, criteria got developed and an RFP went out. We on the committee didn't even, you know, weren't even informed the RFP had gone out until I naively inquired, you know, when are we gonna start working on this? And was told, oh, it's already done and gone. Now, I want to be clear, the superintendent has since apologized for mistakenly providing the incorrect information, and for failing to correct it when he became aware that the process would differ from what he told the subcommittee. And I don't think he was intending to knowingly mislead us. There's plenty of other things out there that just, you know, leads me to wonder, this RFP process was just a formality that had to be processed. You know, there's a, um, we have one school committee member who was on the RFP committee, explained to me in an email that there was only quote, "one space," end quote, where the kids could go, and that was Saint Anne's. And that was before Saint Anne's even responded. Somehow, they knew before Saint Anne's even responded that that's where the kids were gonna go. It was the only place they were gonna go. Um, I think that behavior is, you know, in violation of mass procurement laws, but even if it isn't, it's damaging for our district for several reasons. And the worst three are, one, by telegraphing so publicly that we're gonna be using Saint Anne's, we discourage any other property owners from responding to the RFP. Why should they bother when they know we've already made up our minds? Two, by telegraphing that we're gonna be using Saint Anne's, we encourage Saint Anne's to abuse us in negotiation of the lease. Last time around, after we learned far too late that West Parish couldn't use Fuller as a swing space, Saint Anne's got us to kick in, as the mayor pointed out, over one point two million dollars in building upgrades, in addition to a steep rent. This time, already, despite the fact that Saint Anne's school building is otherwise vacant and generating no income for the church, and despite the fact that the city is about to face a budget crisis, and despite the fact that this church is a multi-billion dollar entity that pays no taxes, and despite the fact that this church is allegedly dedicated to spreading the charitable teachings of Jesus Christ, Saint Anne's already indicated that rent is gonna be in the tune of around twenty thousand dollars a month to use their abandoned building. And we received a report earlier today that we may end up kicking in hundreds of thousands of dollars more in additional upgrades before we get there. I know, um, we can try and negotiate it, but they have no incentive. If we don't get a lease, they like, they know we, you know, according to people on this committee, there's nowhere else for us to go. You know, if they had said, thanks for fixing up in twenty fourteen, we see you're in a real tough spot, just cover the maintenance and repairs while you're here, and the building's yours to use, you know, I could get on board with that. But they haven't, and they won't, because they know, you know, they have all the leverage in this deal, because the way we've conducted ourselves to this point. And three, by engaging this, like, Saint Anne's autopilot, we have failed to really think about what's best for our students the next two years. Uh, you know, let's not forget, this project was started as the East Gloucester School rebuild, and this is happening so that the East Gloucester students can have a new school built. But it's the veteran's school population, which has the highest level of high need students, the highest level of immigrant students, the highest level of non-white students, and the highest level of economically disadvantaged students that are to be forced to bear one hundred percent of the brunt of a swing space disruption. So while East Gloucester students continue to enjoy onsite playground and gymnasium, continue to eat warm food cooked onsite in their kitchen and served in their cafeteria, veteran students are gonna be over at Saint Anne's, which has none of those basic amenities for a school. And especially while the dialogue around systemic inequality is at such a high volume nationally, I can't believe as a city, we're being so tone deaf to this issue. You know, but again, it's hard to have a conversation about these issues when all these decisions are being made in the absence of all but the longest-serving school committee members. Rarely done in public, except when, you know, doing so in public is unavoidable. Neither myself nor the two first-term members of the school committee were involved in this process, or even invited to participate, as far as I'm aware. And I believe only about tonight, because the process is almost over, a rubber stamp vote is needed from the school committee, and it's too late for any real input to have any effect on the outcome. If we don't secure swing space tonight, I'm sure we risk falling off the MSBI timeline, jeopardizing the project, et cetera, et cetera, which is always the case. You gotta vote tonight, you gotta vote the way we're telling you, otherwise the whole thing's gonna fall apart. And, you know, I'm sick of being put in this position. I'm not gonna participate in it. Again, I'm voting no. And if you have Saint Anne's truly was this advantageous swing space, it would have come out on top with a fair and well-thought-out RFP process, but I don't see that process having happened. And because I know of all the defects Saint Anne's has, I find it hard to believe this is the facility that we should be choosing for our students. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm beyond frustrated, um, and I really wish we would stop doing this, you know, to ourselves and to, to the city and to our students.
Jonathan, can I speak?
And then I'm gonna speak.
Okay, um, first of all, I was the city counselor, and I didn't like anyone using it. And so I couldn't understand some of the process, and I was told all these wonderful things by school committee, and, and Joe, you weren't there. But then I became mayor, and we were looking at other spaces. And I think it was brought down and shoved down the city's throat. In the last minute, a rent that we had to pay, and a lease that we had to sign for the industrial park, for the preschool. And yet, you know what? I said, why don't we use Saint Anne's school, but it's not necessary for special needs, and why couldn't we go to veterans and switch over there? But it wasn't. You insisted, you pushed, you did the same thing that we did. We are saying that it's being done to me, done to the, not me, because I am Catholic, so Jesus Christ is fine with me. Uh, I have nothing against Episcopalians, atheists, or anything else. You keep mentioning the Catholic schools or Catholic whatever, but that's okay. You keep mentioning Spanish inner-city kids, um, minority, well, that would, that's what I was, and I had Javi, I had Fuller, I had all those. We didn't have lunches. We didn't have those amenities. And you know what? Either do the kids from West Parish, you keep saying, well, West Parish is all white, if you wanna keep continuing that way, and, and demon, and saying like, we're, we're a bunch of racist people here. But the fact is, that's all around. That's all our children. And you know what? It's not bad to go across the street to a field that's beautiful, or to, to have the library, a whole library for, you know, it's not like we're, we're taking children and putting them out of place, and putting them out of someplace that is, is being treated horrible, or because East Gloucester's all white or whatever, and they get in that. No, they didn't say that. They, East Gloucester didn't even say you couldn't do it to us, or whatever. This is about our children and the best, and even though financially, we are, you know, we are kinda, um, strapped, but this, the, the community and the city did vote on that as all, as the residents. But they didn't have a choice when you shoved down the city side, you, I mean, the school committee, that I had to come up with a lease, a lease that if we didn't have, have come up to pay all that money for the old Blackburns, uh, the Blackburn and whatever, if you wanna call it medical center, would have been horrible. And yet, we're still saying, are we gonna buy, or are we gonna, are we gonna rent it? The same exact thing. Then, I said, okay, give me some time, let's look at it. So we looked at O'Malley's school, if we could hold anything there. Or if we could do the high school. You know damn well that those cannot hold a whole entire school. Not because of COVID, not because of anything else. We had a study, we paid for a study, it was five hundred thousand dollars that we did, and, um, to look at all the space, because I didn't really even wanna, I'm sick and tired of not owning buildings and renting buildings, and and it was the same thing with the cater and everything else. It's not just the school size, I'm not picking on the school. I just hate that. We looked for everything where we can actually put things and do things, and, and save taxpayers' money, because I'm a taxpayer too. Um, and we couldn't, and the best place was, unfortunately, at Saint Anne's, and if you can find a bigger building, whatever, um, they're gonna charge you the same, because the rent at the industrial park, which is half the size, which you don't even, we need to expand the preschool, costs more. So, you know, sometimes we need to learn that instead of renting, maybe we should buy, because by the time we get through with all this rent, it's actually cheaper, and it's actually could be our property that we can invest. But I'm not gonna continue all that. I'm not gonna put you down. That's your opinion, how you feel. Um, I felt that back as a city council, this was thrown in my face. And you know what? But the fact is, could have, should have, would have, in the past, whatever, we need to do what's best. And I know for a fact, because I deal with a lot of the English as a second language, and I deal with all the minorities, and I deal with the parents, and I still work with them, and I still go into their homes, believe it or not. Because like the high school, like your English is a second language, when people trust you, that's the only people they can trust. So, when I spoke to some of the parents, let me tell you something, and my granddaughter will go there. Um, and they, you know what? Some of the parents just want the kids in school. Um, they like it, it's downtown, it's, some it's closer. The ones who don't do, they get buses, um, kid, will they do the, you know what? So, um, we have to make the best of what we have. Um, and we have to do what we have to do. But when you, when parents hear the, that the irate that's in your voice or mine or anyone else's, and, and put all these things about who sue. To me, a child has no nationality, a child has no color, a child has eyes, a mouth, a nose, a heart, and that brain that wants to learn. And as far as food, I will go in and cook, if you like. Because the fact is, you know what? We have great, wonderful programs that these children, that during COVID, a lot of you didn't even care if they were getting food, and didn't get food. Some of them wanted to know about buses after school and buses going to, you know, sports. So let's not start arguing, let's be proactive. And Joel, um, you never said to me on this one, I know all the other ones you wanted to go on, but you never said, put me on here. You did complain about the ethics, and she should disclaim the ethics. You did complain about this. Everything you asked to do, we did. These children are gonna get a brand-new school. These children are gonna get the best of the best. And these children are our children, and it's all one. And, um, if, you know, Samantha and Laura said that whole thing last week and declared all of that, this is what we should be putting first, is what education we can get them, and where, where is the best for them? And unfortunately, there is no other space. You wanna put the high school there? Switch. You wanna put O'Malley there? Switch. Whatever you would like to do, switch. But we still need that school, no matter which school we put there. Thank you.
Melissa?
Thank you. So I just wanna respond, and I, I'm gonna do my best to be respectful of everyone's opinion. And I'm gonna try to take a high road here and not be upset or angry about Joel's spiel that he just gave to us. Lecture, once again, how we're doing everything wrong, and he knows how to do it right. So Joel has referenced that there was a comment about Saint Anne's being the only choice for swing space. So as we all know, and it's very public, I sent an email when this conversation first came up, and I made the comment in an email that Saint Anne's was the only space big enough. I did not say Saint Anne's is gonna be the space. All I said is it's the only space big enough. Why did I say that? I said it because we've gone through this process before. Several years ago, when others here were not on the committee, we had to look for swing space. Um, Jonathan and Kathy will remember quite well how we had to seek out spaces. I think we were actually asking people to find out if they had space to offer us, as opposed to just sitting back and wait for people to come to us. We were seeking space to put our kids together. And the end of conclusion to that was, after looking all over the city, the answer was, Saint Anne's was the only place big enough. And that's where we are tonight. So that, that comment that I put in my email was not an end result that we knew was coming. It was a fact. I stated it as a fact and nothing more. Since that email, Joel sent a few very derogatory and rude emails that I was privy, privileged to read to the mayor, making demands and threatening to sue. So, as a result of that, him claiming I have a conflict of interest, I called the State Ethics Commission, had a lengthy conversation with them, showed them the email, and had a very long conversation about my son's funeral, because that's where they had to go to find out, and, and inquiry to me, whether or not I had a conflict of interest with Saint Anne's. It was about a relationship with a priest, not because of your email. So, I went through that conversation, and it was determined I have absolutely no conflict of interest, because I do not have a relationship with Saint Anne's. And furthermore, Joel, I do not have a child at Veteran's School. My family is not directly impacted by this vote tonight. And I don't know that you can say the same, so I'm gonna call a point of order on that, if you're gonna vote on this decision tonight. Because it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, that you have a child at Veterans that could be directly impacted by this vote, which I'm sure if you contacted the State Ethics Commission, they would likely tell you that you have a conflict of interest, because you have a direct family member of your household that's involved in this conversation, where I didn't. So regardless of that, even though I was told I didn't have to, on January sixth, I filed this disclosure, which I was gonna say tonight before I took the vote. It's a disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest required by Mass General Law two sixty-eight A, section twenty-three B three, which is a form that you file with the city clerk when there is an allegation of a conflict of interest. So I had an allegation by Joel, but know that it was clearly told that I do not have a conflict, but I still took the extra steps, filed this form, I sent a copy to Jonathan, I sent a copy to the mayor, and it is on file at the city clerk, in case Joel decides to continue this conversation and try to convince the, the public that there is a conflict here, when there's not. So that is on file. I can send it to anybody who wants to read it, and I clearly wrote in it that I was accused of having a conflict, and I don't. I took it a step further, because Joel said he was gonna file a complaint with the Attorney General's Office and sue the school committee, because once again, we're doing everything wrong. The Attorney General Office, when I called them, told me they wouldn't even get involved in a lawsuit like this. So they confirmed with me that, in their opinion, there was nothing for them to get involved with, with this decision. So Joel's threat of that was wrong, and Joel's argument that I had a conflict of interest is wrong. So you're not always right, Joel. You're right to have your own opinion, we respect it, but every time you make a decision like this, you come across as saying, we're doing everything wrong. You're the gatekeeper of how we're supposed to act. And to take it further, I'm gonna challenge you on your conflict of interest, if you do have a child at Veterans. But you also took a vote a couple weeks ago, when we were voting on swing space at Saint Anne's. And we had to enter into an agreement with them, an agreement that you looked over and actually made changes and approved, but then you voted no. And when you voted no, you made the comment that you think the tr- the church, Saint Anne's Church should have, shouldn't be charging us rent for furniture, because they have millions of dollars. So right there, it shows you kinda, you have an issue with the Catholic Church and the fact that we have to pay them. So I can't help but wonder, if that's another reason why you voted no tonight. So, then to me, that, that's another serious concern. You, you obviously have something against the Catholic Church and paying them money, and you're making allegations about conflict of interest and complaints that aren't true. So, unfortunately, we have to have this conversation tonight. I was hoping some professional courtesy from you, when you were told that there is no conflict, that you wouldn't bring this up tonight, but you chose to do that. So now, it makes the situation a little ugly, and I apologize to everyone for this, because I really did not intend on having this conversation tonight. But I would like a point of order of whether or not Joel is gonna be able to vote tonight, even after we heard him do his spiel about how wrong we are, knowing that he has a family member, as far as I know, and I could be wrong, that's directly impacted by this vote, and if so, then he is the one that should be filing these forms with the city clerk before he votes. So I don't know how you wanna handle that, but to me, that's the conflict here, not anything I did. And I don't wanna hear this topic brought up again, because I did nothing wrong by saying Saint Anne's is the only place big enough. It's a fact. Not an opinion for me, because if Patlaze was bigger, Patlaze would have been beautiful, but it wasn't. Because Saint Anne's is the only space big enough. I apologize, but I'm just so upset over this whole thing. Once again, Joel, you, you managed to bring ugliness to a conversation, but that's your right.
Samantha?
Um, so, I am not opposed to Saint Anne's, I think, from previous experience, hearing, um, Dr. Emil discuss about, discuss West Parish's, uh, experience. They have nothing but good things to say about the location and about the experience that they had there, and I trust their judgment, being that they've been there for two years. And I think accessibility is really important. It's still downtown, um, and it's still walkable for a lot of families. The one thing that I will say about the process, um, though, is that just in the future, if you are looking for people to be a part of a RFP or committee or something, that, that is sent out to the whole committee, because I, I wasn't made aware, I don't know if anybody else, um, knew that you were even I don't know if anybody else, um, knew that you were even looking for people to be a part of that. So, um, again, I, I realize that being a new member, um, some of these things might need to be more explicitly spelled out. So I think in the future, that would be really helpful, because, you know, I'm, I'm myself would have liked to be a part of that process.
I'm pretty sure that, uh, when we discussed the process, um, that I said the mayor would be appointed, the committee. And, uh, as with all committees, um, if you want to be on them, you have to make your known to the mayor. Any other, um, question?
Can I just speak to the motion now? I, I, I want to just talk about my support of the motion, not how, not the process.
Okay.
Because we are in deliberation of the motion.
Yes.
That's what I like to do at this point. So obviously, I'm in vote in favor, because that was my recommendation coming out after touring. But, um, knowing that that school provides enough space, it's the only location that provides parking. Um, the pathways place, we would have had to likely rented space, which would have been an additional cost, because pathways only provided five spaces for parking. Obviously, we need more than that. Um, and the fact that, um, if we remember, um, when West Parish teachers were using the facility, um, we got a lot of good feedback that the teachers were really happy to be downtown for all the, um, actions that the mayor spoke about, the kids being able to go to the library, the kids being able to be involved with downtown Gloucester. Um, a lot of good came out of that. There was a lot of good conversations. There was a lot of happiness. So, um, for those reasons, I'm going to support this motion to have St. Anne's be.
Kathy.
I'll also speak on the motion as to why I will be supporting this. Um, obviously, I was on the review committee. Um, we did a very objective, uh, walkthrough of both sites. We had Bill Samborn with us, who's very familiar with both buildings. He even said today that he originally thought that, um, that it would be pathways, uh, even before we started doing our things. And he said, you know, clearly, St. Anne's is the right space. It's, um, structurally, you know, came through with pretty good, pretty good results. I think that was probably his biggest concern. Um, uh, John McCarthy was also on the evaluation committee, so there were seven of us. Um, for, um, so I think we had many different points of view or different, um, uh, different background and what people were looking for. And everybody agreed that this was, um, not only the best fit for, for the RFP. It definitely fit the RFP. Um, but Principal Fusco was excited about this as being in a place where his school community could thrive for the next two years. And I know with West Parish, we were very concerned about the transition for the students, both out of West Parish and then back into West Parish. Um, and there, and there were tremendous positive reasons. I think some of those families and kids are more connected to the downtown area, um, by being there and all the experiences they had. And I think veterans, even though it's a little bit, um, down the road from downtown, but still part of downtown, I think these students and, and teachers will have a wonderful experience with a different part of town. Access to the library. Um, the library did different programs for the West Parish students. I mean, I just think that they're, that instead of this being, um, you know, a, a step off the path, it helps these kids continue to grow and grow in different ways and take advantage of different opportunities while they're in transition of waiting for the next school. Um, back to Joel's comment about underserved or equity and everything. I'm, I'm a little baffled by that. Uh, I, I don't know if your thought was that East Gloucester should move for the sake of moving? And then we'd have two school communities kind of moving around? And, um, I, I just, I don't even know what to do with that comment. It just seemed just kind of complaining for complaining's sake. Um, I do think that St. Anne's is going to be a wonderful place for these, um, you know, for the two years. It fits, it fits financially. Um, and, and I know that still needs to be, you know, totally tightened up by John Dunn and the city side. But, um, but by all reports, it's got, it, it fits the criteria we were asking for in the RFP. Um, so I'm happy that there's actually a place within the catchment area of veterans that will serve this population.
Any other discussion? I would just like to go, okay, Joel, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. So, um, the most pressing point, um, in deference to Melissa's concern, I do have a son who is enrolled at Vets and she is right that he would be affected by this. So, um, having not contacted the State Ethics Board on this, I think she is right that I should recuse myself from this vote. And I'm going to recuse myself from this vote. So I know I, I mentioned previously I'd vote against this. Instead, I'm not going to be, um, voting at all. And, um, you know, the, the, I just want to clear up that I never made a threat to sue the school district or school, sue the city. I just said that, you know, I felt the need to report what I thought was improper actions to the AG's office. I did. They forward it to be over to the IG's office. And if, you know, as Melissa said, there was no issue, then the complaint isn't going to go anywhere and that's fine. But I just wanted to, you know, I thought something didn't smell right. And so I was going to let the right people know and that's all that was. I never threatened to sue anybody over this. Um, that's going to kind of clear that up. Uh, otherwise, you know, given the fact I'm going to recuse myself from the, the vote, I'm going to stop speaking to the motion at this point.
Okay. All right. As far as, um, Melissa's point of order and, and your response to that, I would just like to say that I don't, I'm getting somebody else's. I don't believe that, uh, we all vote, um, many times on, um, things that affect our children or, or people, um, that we have close relationships to. Um, unless there's sort of some advantage being, uh, given to them, I don't believe that there's any conflict of interest. Okay, um, that's my opinion. But, uh, as far as that goes, I mean, um, I don't believe that, uh, you know, if, uh, the, um, you know, Joel's child is, is affected positively and negatively, um, by his, his vote on this. Um, uh, so, and, and there's going to be times, and, you know, we've all done it. Um, you know, you have a granddaughter at East Gloucester School. So is, 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 is that mean you can't vote on anything on East Gloucester School? Son in the high school. I just, I don't think is, uh, uh, I don't think that that rises to the level of, uh, having to exclude yourself from a vote. Um, but that being said, also, but I am very offended by the fact that it keeps getting stated that somehow we're not doing things properly. I, we tried very hard to do things right. RFP was issued and perhaps you got some, some information, um, that wasn't correct. But the, um, at the time, but the process was followed, that is, is correct. The city, the school committee asked the city to provide swing space. The city proceeded to issue an RFP. The city created a committee to, um, review the RFP and they made their recommendation. And this is our point where we, like, say that this is acceptable. Um, or not acceptable. But it's, it's the city's project. It's the city's money. We not, you know, I, I, the state law is, is very specific. That says that if we wanted to spend our own money, we could get to run the, run the, um, the project. But we're not. We don't have the money. Um, so we need, I, I'm going to support this. Um, and, um, I'm going to call for, uh, for a vote. Um, Maria, could you give a roll call vote?
Mayor taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Abstain.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
And Ms. Prince.
Yeah.
Uh, it carries in favor, uh, one extension and, uh, thank you very much. And let's move on to our other action items that we, uh, uh, have to take up. And we still are going to go into executive session, uh, to discuss negotiations. Um, and the first item is, uh, Gloucester Education, um, uh, Foundation Grant, uh, three hundred, thirty thousand dollars for the Gordon Summer Engineering Camp for elementary schools. Um, and I so move.
Second.
Uh, is there any discussion?
I think we're voting on this again, just be, to be clear, that it's for an elementary level, not the high school.
Exactly. It was missed. It was, uh, it was incorrectly, um, uh, identified in the, in our last vote. So this is accurate and this is money that's going to go for elementary school students to, to attend the summer, um, engineering, um, program. Any further discussion? Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Mayor taken.
Yes, I don't know why I keep shouting it off, but yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
And Ms. Prince.
You're muted.
Yes.
Okay, it carries unanimously. The next one, uh, uh, Gen Youth, uh, Grant in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for Veterans Memorial, Beaman Memorial and O'Malley Innovation Middle School to help the Food Services Department with COVID-19 services, um, i.e. milk, um, coolers, travel carts, food prep equipment and disposable paper and plastic products. And I so move.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Um, Maria, could we have roll call vote?
Mayor taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
And Ms. Prince.
There you go, Melissa. Yeah, okay. Well, thumbs up. Um, so, uh, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Um, the next is the approval of the Ask Me Bean contract from July one, first, um, two thousand twenty-two, um, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Um, we have discussed this session. Um, I was, uh, told, uh, when I contacted the, um, the, uh, the advocates for the, the, um, that they were all in the, everybody, all the members were in the negotiating team. So they didn't have to ratify it, um, because they were all, all there. So, um, we can ratify, we, uh, have, we have voted in, um, and discussed this in executive session. And this is just a public, um, uh, acknowledgement that we are, um, approving, uh, the MOU, uh, of the extension of the contract. Um, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, uh, Maria, roll call vote.
Mayor taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
And Ms. Prince.
Yeah.
Okay, it carries unanimously. Um, thank you. Now we'll move on to the Gloucester Teachers Association Memorandum Agreement Regarding the Reopening of Schools for a two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. And, uh, once again, we've already, um, reviewed this in executive session. And, um, the teachers, uh, the GTA has ratified this and, uh, is now our turn to ratify this, uh, agreement in, in, um, public session. And I so move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Mayor taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Abstain.
I'm sorry?
She abstained.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
No.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, it carries five in favor, one against and one abstention. Uh, thank you. That concludes our action items.
And just so you know, um, I appreciate all the teachers. I never vote in all the years I've been mayor. I've never voted on all the budgets and I've never voted on any negotiations and stuff, because we have to do ours. Because of what's happening and then because of the respect. I have respect for all city employees. Don't get that wrong, because we're all working hard. But to understand and give, have the faith and continue to open schools when they, they could have fought and they didn't, because they did put the students first, I did take this vote proudly.
Thank you. Thank you. We, uh, we all appreciate, uh, the hard work that the teachers have put in and keeping the schools open, um, along with everybody else.
And just so you know, I've been fighting. I think all DPW workers, all teachers should get vaccines immediately. I should, they should have been phase one. I've been fighting. I've been crying. I've been saying it. And I said that I feel like this is when the pandemic hit, that we didn't know what stages were, what phases, what was essential. You know, PAKs were open, but that was closed and I felt the same exact thing. And I keep fighting it and I keep, I'm proud of the, the principals and the superintendents and the teachers signing that, you know what? Our lives first too. And, and you know what? If I could have signed, I signed, but I did bitch. So I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. That concludes action. Um, we would normally get an update on the, um, on the, um, uh, East Gloucester Veterans Memorial School Building Committee. Um, uh, it's, uh, ten twenty-six.
Can I give literally a sixty-second?
Okay, sixty-second.
Okay, um, so we haven't met since the last time the school committee has met. So the building committee has not met. But, um, Superintendent Lummis did do a community forum, uh, which I thought was extremely well presented and, and a lot of really great information that, um, that needs to get out into the community and to the families. Uh, I think there were a little bit less than thirty people that attended that forum. But I think the more regularly they happen, the more, um, attendance and, and interest and hopefully enthusiasm and excitement about the project will, will build. Um, the second piece is that, um, Principal Fusco and Principal Pasqualeo did a video that, um, Joel shared, because he's a parent, so he got that video. Um, so I highly recommend people look for that. Uh, it was a nice video on the interior and exterior selections. Um, well, I shouldn't say selections, but options that, that both groups are looking at, um, to just give people an idea of, um, some of the thinking and the direction that things are, um, are developing. Um, the last piece is that we have a BNF meeting in February. And one of the items on the list is the discussion of the dishwasher at, um, at the new school. But for the committee to know that there is one plan already in the school. So, um, I think what we'll be hearing at BNF is, um, a report from Martha Jo about, you know, what implications, what costs, what staffing, just so we understand kind of what it looks like. Um, which, because it'll be different in terms of how we're doing things now. But it, but they'll have that option of the dishwasher.
And, and, and the new website, and the new website.
Oh, sorry. And a very beautifully new redesigned website, um, that we encourage everybody to go to.
Can you say the, can you say the name, the URL?
Uh, I can. It's best to just go to the homepage of our district website, but it's, it's egsvetsbuilding dot Gloucesterschools.com, so.
Okay. And I was going to say just that the, that video from East Gloucester and Vets is on the, on the school committee Facebook group, where people also can look for information.
And on the new website. And so we'll have, the website is more easily, easy to update. So we'll have, uh, there's a summary of the community forum on there now. There's the recordings from the community forum and, and all, all the recent recordings and also upcoming events and also history on that. So it's, uh, nice to use and will be updated frequently.
Okay. Anything else before we, um, make a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chair, there was another action item. Um, an approval of a request from the city clerk.
Oh, exactly. I'm sorry, I missed that. Uh, we have a request from, um, the city clerk, um, uh, to use, um, the schools, um, uh, for the, uh, public elections, uh, the primary on September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one and November, and the general election, two thousand, November second, two thousand twenty-one. This is, um, this happens every time there is an election. This is, this happens every time there is an election. And I so move. They just need to be able to say that they have our permission.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have, I have a question. We haven't gone over our school calendar for next year. And I know the regular election date is always incorporated into how we plan the school year. And I'm curious what September 14th, what implication that might have on the operations of school.
Okay, well, the, are you suggesting that we make some adjustment in our calendar or that we don't let the city use, use the schools for the primary election?
I'm just saying, we're going to have to think about what the implication, you know, what the procedure implication or logistics on that day might be if we're having a regular school day.
I, I think this past year, there was a primary for the general, for the national elections and we did not have school.
No, we, we remember school started late. So, so.
Oh, right. We did, we didn't have school, but it wasn't because of that.
So I, I will work with Mr. Bach and Barbara Dundin on, on the calendar because I've been actually asking about that. And, but can I just ask a question on this? Is there have been primary days, September, and all the years before this past one, were schools open or not?
Primaries for, for local elections are rare, but not, you know, but are a possibility. Generally speaking, there has to be more than twice the number of seats. So there, if there were three people running for mayor, there would be, we would have to have a primary for that. If there were, you know, 13 people running for school committee, you'd have to have a primary for school committee. If there were more than, if there were three people running for a ward council, you'd have to have a primary in that ward. That's, that's the charter. So it's a possibility.
Right. So, so Mr. Bach and I will work on the school calendar and bring it to the committee or bring it through the subcommittee if necessary. And, and then, and share with you what, what our intentions or plans are through that process.
Right.
What's going on?
Samantha?
There have been parent concerns though about the schools being open at all during any election. Having folks coming and going from the school. So just that came up last year before Ben was here. So I just think it's good for you to know.
Yeah. And, and the calendar is going to have to be looked at too, because the state has just said that Juneteenth is a state holiday. Now, whether that falls in our school year or not is on the cusp usually. So anyway. Is there any further discussion on the, the motion? Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Mayor taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy? Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince?
Yeah.
Okay, it carries unanimously. Okay, we're now going to take a vote to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations. We have got a motion to meet in executive session pursuant of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the, for the following purpose, as an open meeting may have detrimental effects on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and to return into only open session only to adjourn. We were going to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the GATE negotiating team. We're going to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Teamsters Local Union 42 Transportation Workers and to discuss strategy related to negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the administration.
Wait, Jonathan, can I, Jonathan, can I add? Stephanie updated the agenda yesterday because she put approval of the transportation in executive session also.
Okay.
It was revised yesterday.
Okay.
To discuss strategy and approve the transportation workers.
Okay. Now, does that mean we have to come back into public session to, to vote it? No?
No, no, they're, they're going to, they're voting to ratify on Friday. So just as we can do it in executive session and then we can just do open session at our next meeting if it passes.
All right, fine. So that's as the motion is amended to include approval of the the contract with the Teamsters. Okay, and I so move, as I said. Second?
Second.
Second.
Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
Mayor taken.
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince?
Yeah.
All right, we will move into executive session and we will only come back into public session to adjourn. So thank you very much.